I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Madam Vice Chair? I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Latif, Ralston, and Zaragapour, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair? Ms. Williams? I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enters the closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, to consult with division counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation involving employment and education matters as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, 2, and 7. Three, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8. Four, to discuss the qualifications and selections of student representatives to the school board for the 2022-2023 school year under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. And five, to review the grievance appeal of employee T. 22-39 under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Latif, Ralston, and Zaragapour, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now to turn into open session from closed A motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair? I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of June 1st, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Madam Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I'll second.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Latif, Ralston, and Zaragapour, motion passed.
Before we move on with the meeting, I just want to make an announcement that Dr. Latif cannot attend today due to a prior commitment, and he's unable to be here, but he is sorry, he can't be here. With no objection from the board, I would like to move the closed session action items to after thriving futures. Are there any objections? All right, then we will move that. Okay, we will move on to my favorite part, the thriving futures focus. So, good evening. We are pleased to continue our launching thriving future focus to recognize our outstanding students. Last month, we recognized our award-winning robotics teams at the middle and high school level. I'm proud to share that several elementary school teams have also brought home trophies. Ms. Jessie will begin with honorees in the Okaquan district.
Wow. Okaquan, let's be on our best behavior. It's exciting. I would like to... I'm sorry, I need to look at this. The robotic club, Okaquan Elementary's Robotic Club, is the 2021-2022 Global Innovation Project winner in the first LEGO League. Members of the team include Nathan Delago, Nathan Nelson, Lorenzo Quintero, Maximila Quintero, Bryson Smith, Miles James, Isabella Filazzo, Alexandra Kamitski. I was worried about this word. Akeia Ab...
Abey.
Thank you, Okaquan. Mariah Sala, Mayo Ayakuba, am I good? The coaches are Vanessa Santos, Kevin Wilkins, the principal is Buddy Lent. And Buddy, I know you're making that noise out there, because I know you. The coaches may say a few words.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Wilkins. Thank you, Ms. Jessie, and the rest of the school board for allowing us the honor to be here tonight. We would like to thank our parents for all their support throughout the year, and our students that could be here tonight and those that couldn't. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Just a couple of quick words. Ms. Shaddix at our school helped us with videoing our commercial, which was one of the keys to winning the trophy, and she also helped us with video editing, so we'd like to thank her. And we would also like to thank Ms. Carroll for her guidance throughout the year. So, yes, thank you.
I am also pleased to recognize the Lake Ridge Elementary Robotics Team, 19101B, who qualified for the VEX State Tournament World Championship. They are one of the four winners of the VEX IQ STEM Research Project Online Challenge. The team members include Shazan Khan, Kamishi Sood, Chetan James, Emery Schaefer. Coaches include Shawn Ward and Jane Parks. Principal is Sarah Harrington. I saw her here recently. Coach Ward will make a few remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. We would just like to thank you and the rest of the school board, and Dr. McDade, and Mrs. Harrington, our principal, for continuing to support the robotics program. We would like to thank our parents for all their support, and Mrs. Carroll, of course, for her advice and all the hard work she does. And we'd like to recognize and we're thankful for these amazing students and how hard they've worked this year, how well they've worked as a team, their perseverance, and all that they've learned this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And we continue with, it's my pleasure to recognize multiple teams from Rockledge Elementary School. Rockledge Robotics had four teams to compete in fall regional tournaments. Three of the four teams received regional awards and trophies. Let's give a round of applause for that. That Okaquan group, they're kind of loud, I'm sorry. The Robotics White Team won the first Core Value Trophy for Division One. Robotics Green Team won the first Robotic Design Trophy for Division One. And the Rockledge Gold Team won the first place championship trophy for Division One. This is the most prestigious award that celebrates the team's fully embodied, the first LEGO League experience by completely embracing the first core values while achieving excellence and innovation in both the robotic robot game and the innovation project. Rockledge Green and Gold Teams also advanced to the first LEGO League State Championship in December, where Rockledge Green Team won the second place in the Core Value Trophy. Are there any trophies left? Division One, congratulations to these outstanding robotic team from the Rockledge Elementary School. Tonight, we have several coaches and students joining us. Head coach, faculty advisor is Heather Owen. Head coach Jeremy Webster. Assistant coach tech support is Chris Sepitas.
Sepitas.
Rockledge Robotics White Team coach is Kristy Beans. Students are Parker Bean, Shannon Buckley, Eva Pereira, Noah Rletto, and Anzana Shepherd. Rockledge Green Team coach is Laura Lajine. Students are Adam Alani, Parker Jen, Alex Knight, and Kulan Lajine. Is that related to the coach?
Kulan.
I think those names, I looked at that.
Coach Ken.
And Jordan Nguyen, Mateo Rodriguez. Okay, people, we're still rocking. So, we're still rocking. Rockledge Gold Team, Golden Girls, Coach Narasimhan Abad, Coach Chris Britt. Students are Isma Ahmad, Izzy Britt, Katie Odin, Amaris Ramus, Lily Ryan, Maddie Webster. Assistant coach is Megan Everett, and the coach is Nikki... I mean, sorry, the principal is Nikki Stepto Coleman. Coach Odin will say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie, and the school board. We want to say that you are the highlight of our day. And I can't thank my parents and my support from Ms. Everett, our assistant principal. I can't thank you, parents, I can't do this program. Ms. Denise Carroll, you have been the highlight of our year, of our decade together, everything. Ms. Carroll is the backbone of everything, so thank you all for your continued support for robotics.
Thank you. All right, that was great, thank you. Congratulations to Okaquan, Lake Ridge, and Rockledge Elementary Schools. Let's pause briefly to take a picture of these teams and their coaches with the school board members. Following the pictures, these teams and their families are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, teams, we're going to go this way.
That was wonderful. Next, it's my privilege to introduce Ms. Williams for Ms. Diane Ralston, who can't attend today at the Neapsville District, to recognize Penn Elementary School.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. On behalf of Diane Ralston, we'd like to recognize the Penn Elementary School Penn Bots Team. I think they're coming in now. Give them a second to come on in. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We've never had so many robotics awards in one year before, so it's historic. As I was saying, this is the Penn Elementary School Penn Botics Team, who won the Robotics Design Award in the first LEGO League Remote, which was virtual rumble. The coaches are Kristen Burton and Kat Eman. Students on the team are Levi Thompson, Zar Nassin, Emily Bales, Ambrose Rolvis, Samuel Uranta. The principal is Elliot Bowles. Coach Burton, would you like to say a few words, please?
I just wanted to say thank you for our Penn community who gave us a lot of support, and our students, who I'm so proud of. They've helped us grow our program from the few you see here to 40 that are at home right now watching, hopefully. And we are so proud of what they've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and congratulations to Penn Elementary School. It is now my pleasure to introduce Ms. Waugh of Gainesville Magisterio District, to recognize Tyler Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Tyler, families and students. This is the 13th year that the Tyler Elementary School Super Tomcats have been involved in FLL Robotics. The team earned a competition spot at the state competition by placing second in the regional tournament. So, that is awesome. Congratulations. Team members include Mia Aravalo... Aravalo? Okay. Emma Surwinski, Nathaniel Chung, Zachary Kelly, Fajar Khan, Hayden Mart, Connor Prophet, Benjamin Stanton. And coaches are Betsy Wilco and Bonnie Brucenyo. High school mentor is Hannah Young, which is very cool that you have a high school mentor. And principal is Jennifer Prilla. So, Coach Brucenyo, am I saying that right? Brucenyo, okay. Will provide remarks.
I will.
Or whoever's going to provide remarks. Principal Prilla will provide remarks.
Good evening, all. I'm Jennifer Prilla, the proud principal of Tyler Elementary. I am incredibly proud of our robotics team, coaches, our entire program. While earning second place in this competition was very exciting, we are most proud of our teams repeatedly earning the gracious professionalism award and spirit award over the previous years. Their hard work and dedication are inspired by two incredible coaches, Mrs. Wilco and Mrs. Brucenyo. Mrs. Wilco has coached our robotics program for the entire time that they've been part of the FLL Robotics, all 13 years, and Mrs. Brucenyo joined forces with her six years ago, and together they have truly done an outstanding job. So, thank you for recognizing all of these well-deserving individuals.
Thank you, Mrs. Waugh. Congratulations, Tyler Elementary School. The Victory Elementary School Robotics Club earned the first-place Division One Robotic Performance Award and Champions Award, first place qualifying the team for regional competition. Team members of this exceptional team are Jading Corcino, Rain Corcino, I'm so sorry if I mispronounce anybody's name, Anali Baswa.
Anjali. Anjali. Biswas.
Okay. Thank you. Lily Camino Hurt, Said Ahmad. And the coaches are Joy Moller and Sophie Song. And the principal is Chad Ray. Ms. Moller, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure. I'll give a shout out to Anjali Biswas. Thank you for having us tonight and inviting us here. We just had such a great year, and I can't thank these kids and their families enough for all the hard work they've done. They stepped up. Every single one of them was new this year, so they came out of nowhere and they just worked their hearts off, and we've had such great support from Denise Carroll, and our principal, and the families, and we just had a great, great time, so thank you.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations to Victory Elementary School on your victories. Before we take a quick picture, Denise Carroll Robotics and STEM Initiative Specialist will speak briefly.
Good evening, and thank you for recognizing our amazing FLL and VEX IQ Elementary Robotics Teams and their coaches representing Prince William County Public Schools. As you can see this evening, we have a lot of talent in Prince William from the eastern, western end, and everywhere in between. Our students and coaches represent Prince William in the highest of level. You asked about the number of awards. We had 13 out of 33 FLL Teams from Prince William that went to states, and more than half of the elementary VEX IQ came from Prince William, so we're just talking the littles. And the two elementary school teams that won at states both brought home trophies from the world championship. So, I just want to thank you for recognizing our 1819 students with 38% female this year, and our 157 coaches, 68 mentors, and all together we make the picture of Prince William County Schools Robotics. We just look forward to another successful year, even better than this year. So, thank you very much. We're proud of you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. I love hearing about all the successes of these wonderful students. Thank you. Robotics students and coaches, please come up front for a picture. You may leave after the picture. While we wait for the next group of students, I want to mention that award-winning teams from Marshall and Ashland Elementary Schools will be recognized June 15th due to a scheduling conflict tonight. We'll wait for the next group.
Okay, guys, we're going to slide this way a little bit so we can get everybody in. We've got another few to get on in here, so thank you.
I don't think she's going to bite you.
Principal is Dr. Michael Bishop. Patricia Wheat will say a few words.
Unified Sports is an opportunity for students, typical and atypical, to come together as one. We at Patriot began in 2016 with Unified Basketball and added Track and Field the following year. We introduced and hosted four all-county high school basketball tournaments from 2017 to 2020. We look forward to continuing our program so students with different abilities get their deserved moment to shine.
Thank you. Patriot High School. Unity Reed High School participates in Unified Sports and basketball and cheerleading. Students here include Megan Cummings, Kendi Uwati, yeah, and again, I'm really, really, really sorry. Head coaches are Darren Snoots and Stephanie Nash. Principal is Dr. Richard Nichols. The students will say a few words.
I'm not a student, but I'm going to say a few words. Unified basketball and cheerleading has created a positive culture to our school. It's not just about the game. I want to give out a few shout-outs to some of how our whole school brings Unified together. Our cosmetology students actually get our cheerleaders all dolled up and get their hair done right before each game. Our student council also makes the banners for the kids to run out for all teams. And this, the event, the event is also the most populated event there is out of all the sports. The whole, before COVID, the whole school comes down for these games. And so it just puts a positive culture into our school, and sometimes we need those times. And we appreciate it, and we appreciate you all, and we appreciate the parents, the parents that come out during the day to see their children participate in these events. And for our senior nights when they have our Senior Day games. And we just want to thank also the parents who also come out to support us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Unity Reed. Our new High School Games for High School kicked off its opening with Unified Sports basketball team playing two games against Potomac and Patriot High Schools for hosting a district tournament. Student Caden Powers is here tonight. Principal Neil Beach will provide a few remarks.
Good evening. I want to say thank you very much for supporting and recognizing these Unified Sports programs. They've been a prominent and positive feature of our school this year. Caden's here to say a few words also.
Hello. Thank you for inviting. Thank you for inviting me for the meeting. Unified basketball team was a great experience, getting to, you know, make friends, getting to be a part of something. We get, get used to a new place, getting everybody used to it. So.
Congratulations to these outstanding student athletes. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Williams from Missagapour, who recognized the schools and the Kohls Magisterial District.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Unfortunately, Missagapour couldn't, excuse me, Missagapour couldn't be here this evening. It is my pleasure to recognize the Unified Sports athletes at Colgan and Hilton High Schools. Colgan High School offers the program in basketball, track, and field, and kickball. Athletes here tonight from Colgan High School include Samantha Martin and Julian Koki. See, I might mess this up. Koki Liangyi. Did I get close? All right. Coaches include Dr. Parrish, Kristin Mesnick. Teachers are Nadine Bedu and Stacy Bonnet. And the principal, of course, is Dr. Tim Healy. Hilton High School offers Unified Sports in basketball. Student Austin Fletcher is here tonight along with Kristin McKurt and Lee Holland, who are here on behalf of Coach Joe Campania. And the principal is David Cassidy. In the interest of time, the Colgan and High School programs have opted not to provide marks, but would like to thank the school board for this recognition. Thank you so much for coming out.
Lily Jessie Akakon, Magisterial District, will recognize the Woodbridge High School program.
Woodbridge High School offers Unified Sports programs in basketball and track. Representative students include Isma Watson, basketball. Laura Ash, track. Jaden Ozy, basketball. Their coach is Alan Mulligan, and the principal is the educated nominee for Principal of the Year. Is how that happened. Yeah, I can help there.
All right. Well, thank you, guys, for having us. I've never been at one of these things, so this is kind of cool to talk in front of everybody. But the real point of Unified is, you know, coming together. And my favorite part is seeing the smile on their faces after, you know, a basketball game, a track meet, what have you. And that's just the best part about it. I think the world as a whole can take a lesson from the Unified Program. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Again, Ms. Williams, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Williams for Diane Ralston.
Again, Ms. Ralston couldn't be with us, but I am honored to recognize the Garfield High School Unified Sports Program, which offers basketball and track and field. Representative students include Marvin Gonzalez, Kevin Frimpong, who played basketball and participate in track and field. Their coaches are Ginger Scott and Candace Ray. Principal Matt Mathison. Ms. Scott will say a few words.
Kevin couldn't be here with us today, but we have Marvin here, and I just wanted to say that the time that I got to be here with the kids, it was a great time. And to see all their smiles in the gym, on track and field, it was great. So I just want to thank all the parents and the teachers that were able to help us and get through these events because it was a great time for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce Justin Work from the Potomac Magisterial District.
Thank you. A little emotional because I am a special needs dad, and it is so great to see, as Mr. Mulligan said, something that the entire world could use right now. Forest Park High School has been participating in the Unified Sports for about six years and includes, as Italian-Americans would say, bocce. Track and field, basketball, kickball, and cheerleading. In 2019, Forest Park was recognized as an official Special Olympics Unified Champion School and as the number-one Unified Sports Program in the Commonwealth of Virginia by ESPN. Students and coaches here tonight include Reagan Bussinger, cheerleading, track and field, Jesse Thompson, track, field, kickball, James DeBoer, basketball, Kyle Roth, basketball, Valerie Ibanez Deswat Fono, general education, student in class and sports, Kelly McCann, the amazing Kelly McCann, coach and teacher, another one, Ashley Tayon, amazing coach, of course, Mr. Martinez, who's up for Principal of the Year. Coach McCann would like to say and provide a few brief remarks.
Thank you. I just always like to say that Justin often comes to all of our track and field events and most of our basketball events and anything that he can come. Dr. McDade and Dr. Hubener got to come this year, but our biggest supporters has been our administration within our school being able to do this. We've held the Unified Track and Field Meet all the years we've had it. I don't know how many it is. It's a lot minus COVID. But this year was extra special coming back from COVID. It was a ton of fun. And Ms. Reagan, what is your favorite, favorite part of Unified?
Running and cheering and having fun with friends.
Yes. And at our school, they also get to do Unified basketball, Unified music, Unified art, and Unified dance this year. So it's been a big thing. Thank you.
I have to, I have to interject and recognize the support from the board as well as the superintendent's office, where Ms. McCann is one of the few teachers out there that has a CDL. So she is able to get our teams to and fro with a special bus so we can get our kids there. So many.
It was a new bus this year.
Yeah, she says she had a new bus with all the bells and whistles. But it goes to show the commitment that the teachers have because, you know, with the shortage we have with drivers and trying to make it happen, especially after school, schools that have flex periods, we take advantage of that time. And the biggest thing is having the general population come to the stands and support the kids when they're out there playing basketball during what we call our flex period. So that is something that really motivates them and makes them feel wanted. So I gave kudos to any of the teachers or coaches who have taken that extra step to support this program even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Martinez. Potomac High School offers Unified Sports in basketball, track, field, and kickball. The coaches of the Potomac High School are, and our students are here as well, but I want to mention that our coaches shared that the students love the opportunities for friendship and competition that come with being a member of our Unified Sports Program. Students from Potomac High School include Cameron Hughes, Cameron Gaskew. Coach is curfew, uh, coach is curfew spite. Principal is Brandon Bowles. In the interest of time, a Potomac representative will not speak, but the team is thankful for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Jennifer Walch from the Games for Magisterial District.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Battlefield High School offers Unified Sports in basketball, track, kickball, and bocce. So here tonight is athlete Joshua Nisbet and coach Krista Link. Principal is Ryan Ferreira. And in the interest of time, the team has chosen not to speak, but thanks the school board for the recognition. And I want to just say a couple words because I think Unified Sports represents what is best about Prince William County Schools. It brings kids together, and I'm so proud of all of you who are involved in these programs. I know it's not easy. Logistics can be difficult. But what an inspiration you all are in bringing kids together and developing in them the capacity to love and be friends with those who are different from themselves and understand that we're so, we have so much more in common than we have, that is different. And those lessons are life lessons that kids and leaders and teachers take with them into other aspects of their life as they grow and as they develop. So I just want to say, like, I think this program is just fantastic. I didn't know about it until very recently, not, I mean, within about five years. And I think it's wonderful. So thank you for all that you do. And Battlefield, go ahead. Thank you, Battlefield.
Thank you all again for being here tonight, and congratulations to our students and coaches who participate in this wonderful inclusionary program. Thank you. Dr. Tanya McDade will now say a few closing remarks before we take our last photo of the evening.
Thank you so much to the entire school board for recognizing all of our outstanding students and their coaches. I also want to thank all of our teachers who support the programs, our parents for supporting the program, as well as our principals, all of our principals who were named and some who are present here tonight for creating the conditions for these programs to thrive in the school and bringing the opportunity to each of your individual schools. Thank you all for providing this for all of our students. Congratulations to our award-winning Elementary School Robotics teams who participated both in person and virtually and were honored here tonight. You really represented PWCS well, both in your individual schools as well as the entire school division, and so we're really proud of all of your accomplishments. And I also truly appreciate the inclusionary spirit demonstrated through the Unified Sports Program. I sincerely appreciate all the time and effort that goes into the program, all of the support from our school staff members who are invested in this crucial program. And I had the opportunity to come out and observe and be a part of the festivities this year, and it was just phenomenal. And the spirit on the field, watching the students compete, it was fantastic. So congratulations to each and every one of you. We are so incredibly proud of all that you are accomplishing. So thank you so much. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, you do make us very proud. At this time, I'd like to bring our Unified Sports groups now up to take a photo with the school board. When we're finished, you may leave. Thank you.
Athletes and coaches, principal.
It's all right. It's about the kids.
Do a picture with the kids. It's really nice.
Austin's all the way in the back.
Exactly what he does.
A little back there.
Exactly what he does.
Austin's all the way in the back.
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 Exactly what he does.
Austin's all the way in the back.
Austin's all the way in the back.
Yes, you do make us very proud. At this time, I'd like to bring our Unified Sports groups now up to take a photo with the school board. When we're finished, you may leave. Thank you.
Athletes and coaches, principal.
It's all right. It's about the kids.
Do a picture with the kids. It's really nice.
Austin's all the way in the back.
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 One, two, three. And the last one. Good smiles on this one. One, two, three. Got it. Congratulations.
I'll see ya.
Frank. Frank, I don't think you're ready.
Two.
Yeah. Doing well, yeah.
Yeah, you made it. I read your thing for you. Hoping you would get here. All right.
Moving to closed session, action items. Eight point zero one, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Jessie? Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif and Ralston. Motion passed.
Yes. A motion is in order for the renewal of an annual retainer agreement for legal services provided by James Council Esquire.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the annual retainer agreement for the physical year 2022-23 for the legislative lobbying and legal services provided by James Council Esquire.
Do you have a second?
Madam Chair.
I second. Ms. Zagapor, any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif and Ralston. Motion passed.
Moving on to eighteen point zero one, grievance appeal for employee T two-two dash three-nine, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the recommendation of the hearing officer and dismiss employee seven two-twenty-two dash thirty-nine from his employment with Prince William County Public Schools and further that the chairman-at-large is authorized to sign the decision letter prepared by the division council reflecting the grounds for the school board's decision.
Madam Chair, I wanted to make a correction. It was employee number T two-two dash three-nine.
Okay. Is, is there a second?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif, Ralston. Motion passed.
I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Zagapor.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif, Ralston. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mrs. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Any second?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Zagapor.
I second.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull two items off for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Jessie, you can start.
Madam, Madam Chair, the point of order, instead of pulling the items off, they typically discuss-
Yes, we're going to discuss it. Yeah. Yes, discussion. Yeah, you can go ahead. And we're going to have a discussion now.
Generally, we do not, this consent agenda consists of several items, but there are two items on the consent agenda that I would personally like to discuss this evening. The item is thirteen point zero three, Dumfries Slave Cemetery, and item thirteen oh point zero four, Fannie Fitzgerald Elementary, The Courageous Four. I want to say that this is a night for African-Americans. These items on this agenda are very important to many of us, especially in African-American community. The Dumfries Slave Community, Slave Cemetery is at Dumfries Elementary. And others will may speak on this a little bit later, but I would like to personally recognize two ladies who have worked on this cemetery for many, many years. And those ladies are Norma Fields and Joanne Bonner Reese. And they're in the audience tonight. Please stand. They have been so diligent in their work. And this memorial, being a memorial, the marker is very important. The other item is Fannie Fitzgerald, The Courageous Four, and the historical marker. And you're going to have to bear with me a little bit because it's very personal and it's very important. Many of you think that I was the person that named Fannie Fitzgerald's school, but it was Denise McPhail who brought the idea to me and we, together, we named that school. But in naming the school, we divided up our responsibilities and I was supposed to get the history and Denise was going to do the marketing. And I had the pleasure of talking to Ms. Fannie Fitzgerald and I had no idea what her history was. First of all, when I called her and said, "Fanny, I want to talk to you about your role in desegregating the schools in Prince William County." And she screamed literally for like two or three minutes and she said, "It's been forty years. I thought nobody cared." So I was instrumental in naming that school. Ms. Fannie Fitzgerald passed away and during that period of illness, she lost her memory. And many of us would take her to lunch and I was the designated person to take Fanny to lunch one day. And Fanny, I had to take her back to the nursing home and they said, "She's not going to want to get out of the car, Lily. She's going to want to come back and want you to take her to her house." So I took Fanny to the nursing home. She got out of the car. And although I had worked with her for many years on, I mean, for months on this naming, and she knew me and her family knew me, she came back and she said, "Roll down," she said, "roll down the window." And I did. And she said, "Did you know that they named a school after me?" Fanny lost a lot of things, but she did not lose that because it meant so very, very much to her. So when we, there was a lot of credit given to Fannie Fitzgerald. There were four women who desegregated Prince William County schools. They were Fannie, Fannie Fitzgerald, Ms. Mary Porter, Ms. Zella Brown, and Ms. Maxine Coleman. And when we were in the briefing and we were talking about this memorial, I mean, this, this marker that was going to be at Fannie Fitzgerald, Ms. Lori Williams reminded us that there were four women. And she said, "What about Mary Porter?" And I stopped and I thought, "What about Mary Porter?" That we have forgotten, not forgotten, but we've not given as much, I think, time and discussion of Mary Porter. And I'm going to let her talk later about that. But I followed up on that and I called Gwen Washington. And Gwen Washington is the daughter of Mary Porter. You know, Mary Porter has a school name after her and so does Fannie Fitzgerald. And she said something that I had not anticipated. She said, "I don't want a memorial at my mother's school. I want a memorial for all four of these women because it is a historic time. And if we're going to put historic markers anywhere, I'd like for them to be in the schools that these ladies were overnight moved from an all-black school to a white school." And so I discussed this with Dr. McDade. I've discussed it with Mrs. Green at the Historical Society, at the Historical Commission. And it's not going to be done right away, but she is considering it. So this is the idea down the road. And I wanted to make sure that I put this on the agenda for discussion, not for discussion, just to bring to everyone's attention that Mrs. Porter was moved from Washington Ridge to Dumfries. And we would like for you to consider putting some type of marker or something at Dumfries Elementary. Fannie Fitzgerald was moved from Antioch McCray, which is back off Thoroughfare Road, was an all-black school, to Fred Lynn. Zella Brown was moved from Lock Low, from, to Lock Lowman. And she is still alive. And by the way, the board doesn't want, need to worry about her wanting a school named after her. She's still alive and she said, "I absolutely do not want anything named after me, but we would like to look at a marker for her down the road." And Zella Brown and Maxine Coleman was moved to Westgate. And so I want to make this, this night to remind the staff that our history, our African-American history is important. On the marker that will be at Fannie Fitzgerald, it talks about the first, the first wave of these teachers. But I wanted, it, it, it's not an, it's not a correction, but I wanted the world to know that there were students who desegregated Prince William County schools. And that student was Joyce Russell. She went to Garfield before these ladies and her brother and sister went to Okaquan and Fred Lynn. And with that, I just want the audience to celebrate these black women for what they did for Prince William County.
Thank you, Mrs. Jessie. Mrs. Williams, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to echo, echo, excuse me, what Ms. Jessie was saying and thank the Prince William County Historical Commission for bringing this to the school division's attention and for asking us to provide the permission to put these historical markers on our school property. I think it is well deserved. And I appreciate the effort of the county in helping us recognize our school division history. With that, next up, I just want to take distinct pride and pleasure in announcing Prince William County Schools' second resolution to celebrate LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Last year during COVID, we weren't able to do that. So. If you'll bear with me for just one moment, I would also like to thank my fellow school board members for supporting this as well as the Casa Brumar Foundation for helping this be originated on our agenda two years ago. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas Prince William County Public Schools shares in the belief that diversity, equity, and inclusion are our greatest strengths, whereas the National Education Association has included Pride Month in its list of commemorative months since 1995, and whereas Prince William County's Board of Supervisors resolved to proclaim June as LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus Pride Month in 2020 and 2021, and whereas Prince William County Public Schools has adopted policies on the nondiscrimination and harassment in employment and for students to prohibit the discrimination in employment and educational programming, services, and activities based on, on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, pregnancy, childbirth, or other related conditions, including lactation, age, marital status, veteran status, disability, genetic information, or any other basis prohibited by law. Whereas recognition of LGBTQ plus Pride Month acknowledges the efforts of this community in the pursuit of equality and justice for all, educates the public about illegal discriminatory practices facing the LGBTQ plus community, and celebrates their many accomplishments and contributions. And whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas the Prince William County Schools launching Thriving Future Strategic Plan identifies inclusivity as a core value so that we may welcome all students, staff, and community and celebrate our diversity as strength. And now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board and the Superintendent recognize June 2022 to be LGBTQ Pride Month and urges our citizens, excuse me, to join us in celebrating our students and staff regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. And I just want to say, one last thing to wrap it up. This is a very special item to me. When we first adopted this as a school board, not only did the students reach out, but for the first time, many of our staff members felt comfortable being employed in Prince William. They were pride, they were proud to be employer, employed by Prince William County Schools and vocalized it and finally felt accepted for who they were in their own skin, in their classrooms. And I will never stop celebrating Pride Month. And I'm very thankful for this board's acceptance of this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Wealth. Mr. Wealth.
Thank you. Back to some historical stuff, but that's historical as well. Wanted to recognize that tonight is a night of history and this process for this item I'm going to speak about actually began almost a year ago when a number of constituents of mine emailed me regarding this possibility of naming a library within a middle school after the Honorable Hilda Barg. So I'm going to do the where I statement and then give a little bit of background context here about this since this is something Ms. Barg is not aware of. This is a surprise to her, so this is exciting. So whereas Hilda Barg served as a member of our Prince William County Board of Supervisors from 1987 until 2007, served as a board member of the Arc of Greater Prince William County, served as a board member of the CDA for the Potomac Shores Community, worked with the developer to obtain proffers for two school sites, which have become now Potomac Shores Middle School and Covington Harper Elementary School in the Potomac Shores Community. Whereas Hilda Barg worked with the developer to obtain two baseball fields and a soccer complex in the Potomac Shores Community, now named the Ally Krieger Sports Complex. Whereas Hilda Barg worked with the VRE and developer to proffer the train station that will be coming to the Potomac Shores Community. Hilda Barg was instrumental in obtaining the zoning approval for the Potomac Shores Community itself. She served as the chairperson of the Prince William County Social Services Board, served on the PWC Housing Board, and advocated for and supported the Boys and Girls Clubs of Dumfries. In collaboration with the building principal, Mr. Joe Mergo, community members, the PTSO, staff members, and the SCA, I am proud to move forward the recommendation that the Potomac Shores Middle School Library be named after Hilda Barg. So going back the process here, and initially, when the constituents were emailing me, I said, you know, okay, you know, we'll do this. Getting a number constituent emails. And then there was some pushback, just in general, from the division with a focus on community engagement, some of the board members. And so it made me rethink things. And coming back and thinking about, okay, well, who do I need to talk to in this community about seeing and honoring Ms. Hilda Barg? Because, you know, it is one thing to just- Because, you know, it is one thing to just arbitrarily put a name on a library. So the beauty of this is, initially being a little bit miffed about the whole thing, the beauty of this was, as, as this process developed and unfolded, not only was it telling a story of a historical member of our community, but it was actually engaging the constituents. You know, back on, you know, I'm picking a couple dates just to give some emphasis on this. So back in February of '22, this past year, Principal Mergo first discussed this idea with his staff. So getting staff buy-in is obviously important. You know, they work in the building, so it's critical to see how staff feels about this. Then in March of '22, I presented at a PTSO meeting, I think there were over 25-ish parents who were at the meeting. Not only did I talk about the strategic plan and the school budget, but I wrapped up and talked a little bit about Ms. Barge, her accomplishments. I learned a lot about Ms. Barge through this process as well, through her advocacy and her work. You know, Potomac Shores would not be in existence today had it not been for the advocacy of Hilda Barge. And just an educational opportunity here is, when we look at development of land for our schools, right now, we have to buy it. So we're paying millions and millions and millions of dollars when we're looking for land for like that 14th high school, or looking for future elementary schools. It's notable that Hilda Barge got two proffers, which basically was the land free for our school division to build two state-of-the-art buildings in, in my district, which are Covington Harper, named after two honorable individuals themselves, and then now Potomac Shores Middle School, which the community voted overwhelmingly for, for that name. Now, I will mention, the highest name name of that vote was Hilda Barge, in third place behind two names of the community itself. And so then finally, we did a couple times trying to schedule meetings with the Student Council. One time, the sponsor came down with COVID, so we had to reschedule, but we met with the SCA, and we worked collectively with the sponsor, with the students, and, and received and solicited student feedback, which was great to hear, even, you know, like you think about it, middle school kids, but there was some great feedback, and they appreciated the educational opportunity of what this bestowed on them in some regard. So in conclusion, I'm excited about this, because it does, in my opinion, reflect feedback from the various, the groups, the, I guess we'll say, interest groups, or the constituents, not only the adults, the teachers within the building, having sign-off from Principal Mergo himself, who wrote a letter in support of this, which is a huge thing, and then also getting sign-off from the students. You know, I would remiss, be remiss if I didn't mention Supervisor Andrea Bailey, who was influential in speaking with some of the board members about the importance of Hilda Barge, who has appointed Hilda Barge to committees over this past couple of years as well. I do want to thank Ms. Lucille Frye, a constituent in the district, who did not give up and kept on hammering this and said, we need to move forward, we need to do this. And that advocacy is very appreciated, along with the many other peoples, people, excuse me, who supported this, including former school board member, Ms. Betty Covington and such. So again, I, I'm excited about this. I'm happy we will be dedicating the library within Potomac Shores Middle School to Ms. Hilda Barge.
I just wanted to add that Hilda Barge has, has been around forever. She and Betty Covington, who was my mentor on this board, were buddies, and they would go on trips together. And she was not from my district, but she came to my school, and she is just one of those people that just loves her work and loves this community. And so Ms. Lucille, what was her last name again? She called me too. And she was adamant about this, and it went on and on. And so I'm proud to be one of the people to say to Justin that I supported this naming of this, this library in her honor. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
The vote is five yes, two absent, Latif and Ralston, one not present at vote, wall, motion passed.
Moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour, with the first half-hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, and the second half-hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified or they will be asked to step down. We have nine speakers on agenda items and 10 on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room will be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will now call the first five speakers to the front. Jennifer Rokowski, William Deutsch, Evelyn Brumar, Ken Nar, Carol Fox.
Good evening, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, Dr. McDade, and school board members. My name is Jennifer Rokowski, and I reside in the Okaquan District. I'm speaking tonight in support of the LGBTQ+ Pride Month Proclamation. I serve on the Virginia Education Association LGBTQ+ Ad Hoc Committee, as well as a regional director for the NEA LGBTQ+ Caucus. Serving with these groups, working with other organizations, I'm very aware of the attacks on LGBTQ+ people, especially those in education, whether they are students or staff. It's not just in states like Florida with the Don't Say Gay bill. In Hanover County, Virginia, they hired an anti-LGBTQ+ firm to write its transgender policy. In Orange County, Virginia, there is a proposal that would require schools to disclose a student's self-identification to their parents without the student's consent. What if the home environment isn't safe? Sometimes, school is the only safe place for students. I'm grateful that PWCS listened to staff and students regarding Regulation 738-5, Treatment of Transgender and Gender Nonconforming Students, by revising the original language that had the same issue Orange County is facing. With some local school divisions still failing to pass the required no-discrimination policies, I'm glad PWCS has this in place. However, I feel a training needs to come down to all staff members, so they know how to support their students and colleagues. I'd also like PWCS to look at adding gender-neutral bathrooms in all schools. Sending schools to the nurse's bathroom may be convenient, however, that could imply the student is sick, and they are not sick. I'd like to encourage students to look into starting GSA clubs in their schools. From the GSA Network, GSAs are student-run clubs that bring together LGBTQ+ and straight students to support each other, provide a safe place to socialize, and create a platform to fight for racial, gender, LGBTQ, and economic justice. Know that there's interest but not sure where to start? Reach out to an organization like Casa Brumar for help on starting a club like this at your school. In conclusion, I'm sorry to, that our school board members and KLC staff have been on the receiving end of some hateful and hurtful comments. Thank you for staying strong and staying vigilant in your support of our underrepresented minority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have William Deutsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. I come before you right now as this school division, school divisions across the county grapple with the largest deficit in learning that's occurred across the country. Just on May 25th, The New York Times is talking about the impact that the COVID shutdowns had on students' emotional and social well-being. A Harvard recently issued a study talking about the impact that school shutdowns had on learning loss. And as we review the school division's own data here, we see that Prince William County had the largest widening of the achievement gap of any school division in Northern Virginia. So while we talk about equity, while we talk about celebrating diversity, the actions of the Prince William County School Board hurt the most vulnerable, those that we celebrate when we celebrate diversity. And right now, Prince William County Schools has to grapple with, how do we change that trajectory? How do we deal with the consequences of this board's actions? And work on the learning loss that happened before. And right now, the school division is considering a proposal that will continue moving in the wrong direction, namely approving collective bargaining with the PWA here in Prince William County. Because we saw during 2020, the largest advocate for shutting down schools and denying student academic future, while also having no plan for what to do with the academic achievement loss, was the PWA. Constantly, emails flooded this board accusing board members of not caring about people's lives, intimating that board members would be killing people if we went ahead with having school. And it was PWA that pushed the narrative that we must deny students' educational futures. And that directly led to the academic achievement loss. So if this board is serious about the academic achievement that has happened in this county, continuing to give a platform to the largest advocate for academic achievement loss in this county is the wrong move. Secondly, this proposal for collective bargaining is going to have incredible financial costs, and those need to be spelled out. I read through the, the school division's attorney's presentation you're about to receive, and there's a slide that details all the costs that are associated, but somebody needs to go through with finance and actually spell those out into a number, and make sure that this board understands the costs. But if this school board wants to reverse course on what they did to widen the achievement gap in this county, don't move forward with collective bargaining.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all. My name is Evelyn Brumar. First, let me let you know that I am a Prince William County Human Rights Commissioner. And a few weeks ago, we passed a resolution to declare, affirm, and recognize the month of June of 2022 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, or Questioning and More Pride Month. Also, the Commonwealth of Virginia recognizes LGBTQ+ individuals as a protected class through the Virginia Values Act of 2020, and it is our job as Prince William County Human Rights Commissioners to help enforce those protections whenever a complaint has been made for us to investigate. But what brings me here is also that I sit on the board, the newly-created board by the governor, by the previous governor, the LGBTQ Advisory Board. It was created under Northam, and I currently serve Yonkin. Governor Yonkin will be attending next week, a Pride Proclamation celebration at the Rotunda at the Capitol, so we have a lot of support for the community from the Commonwealth to this local level here. But I'm here to represent Casa Brumar Foundation and the work that we do here in Prince William County, in Nova, and throughout the whole Commonwealth. I support this proclamation, and I support you all for protecting LGBTQIA+ students, teachers, staff, and faculty, because we know that when we are inclusive, we make a better place for our children and for our people that work for us, and it makes it a little bit better when the world seems to be crumbling down around us. So Casa Brumar Foundation also participates in CIT training for our first responders, law enforcement, and other government agencies. We understand that crisis intervention, when, for the least among us, is very important to make sure that their safety and our safety is kept intact. We also have an education program that runs throughout the whole Commonwealth, where we help LGBTQIA+ students who drop out of high school because of bullying, or intimidation, or assault, and want to finish their high school education, get a diploma, or go to, get a GD, we help them do that. And if they want to do more than that, we help them go through a certificate program and go to a trade school. This is offered through, for all the kids who identify as LGBTQIA, who are 18 to 25, and want to continue their education through the Commonwealth. But let me go on and just say first, I have a lot of love for you all. Thank you for working a few years ago to get this passed here. When I moved here, I didn't think this was going to happen. When I moved here, I was the target of bullying. I was intimidated, I was harassed, I had people show up at my house with guns, and I had people chase me out of meetings. And it makes me happy that I feel safer now coming out in public and discussing this with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Nar.
Ken Nar, Gainesville District. A couple weeks ago, I ran into Ms. Jessie at a function, and we had a delightful conversation about teacher pay. We agreed teachers don't do what they do for pay, and that good teachers will do their very best without a massive pay raise. Previously, I've pointed out the extra demands teaching the most diverse student population in the Commonwealth, and the 10th most diverse county place, is, places on our teachers. Our student demographics also increased the demands on our school's professional development program. However, tonight, I want to come from a different angle. What is the prevailing wage for a new teacher at Prince William County? And actually, it applies to any resident that we think deserves to own a home. First-line number, $400,000 house with a 10% down payment and 3.6% interest is $2,318 a month. Utilities, food, and entertainment, roughly $1,625 a month. Transportation and insurance, $500 a month. School loans and professional development for their master's degree, $125 a month. Savings, retirement, and professional affiliations, $520 a month. These expenditures equal $5,088 a month, or $61,056 a year. This is $7,500 more than the gross income of a new teacher in this school system. Total taxes and social security payments, $2,032 a month, or $24,384 a year. Therefore, the estimated prevailing wage for anyone starting a job in Prince William County is $7,220 a month, or $85,440 a year. Prince William County teachers have to wait 20 years to make $85,605, according to the FY23 pay scale. If you think these numbers are high, Redfin average, average value of a home in Gainesville is $6,000, $675,000. Zillow shows that same average at $691,000. In 2020, the bottom of the last five years in Gainesville, the home value was $425,000. So my estimate of a $400,000 townhouse is not very high, and the estimate on transportation at 500 a month is not very high. The median Gainesville income is $82,627. 61% of Gainesville's population is between the ages of 25 and 64, the same as our teachers. If we want to compete with our six neighboring school systems, who are in the top 10 wealthiest counties of the country, we must do better. If we want to recruit, retain, and retire the best teachers, we must do better. If we want to enter into collective bargaining with earnest, we must do better. The only way to come close to this level of pay for our teachers and staff is to significantly increase the county's commercial tax base above the industry target of 35%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carol Fox, Gainesville. Tonight, I want to talk to you about teachers' unions and collective bargaining, and they're really good for teachers, but they're bad for students and parents. The early focus on teachers' unions and collective bargaining was in raising teachers' pay, benefits, working conditions, and creating tenure for the teachers. This was good for the teacher. In the 1960s, 70s, and 80s, teachers' unions blossomed, and all of the pay for all the teachers went up. How did it affect students? Well, the SAT scores dropped. The third-grade reading level, which is the benchmark for student success in school, dropped. Graduation, dropped. So does collective bargaining really affect and help school, schools? Well, it helps the teacher, but it doesn't help the students or the parents. Terry Moore, professor at Stanford University, has found that collective bargaining does not ensure any success for students in schools. As a matter of fact, it can create obstacles for student success. The NEA spends half of their millions of dollars on collective bargaining, and the rest of it, it spends on election politics. From the VEA, the Virginia Education Association's website, their goal is to have greater school funding, better pay for the teachers... funding, better pay for the teachers, and elect pro-republic education candidates locally and statewide. This is electioneering, engineering. Where is the better pay, working conditions, and electioneering, and the student involved in this? They're not. Where is the parent who fits foot all of these bills, who built this room, who built all the schools, who pays the salaries of you, who pays the salaries of the teachers sitting behind me? They have no seat at the table. Their seat at the table is you, the elected officials. If you give collective bargaining to the teachers, the seat at the table for the parents goes away, the seat at the table for the students goes away. You become a tool of the unions, because they owe you from the money that they put into your reelection or your election to the school board. So remember that all of these items, as far as unions and the money that's put into you, is electioneering, and you're responsible to the parents, you're responsible to the students. So that is why I say collective bargaining is not a thing for Prince William County and should not be considered by the school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speakers are April Youngblatt, Emmett Fletcher, Brandi Provenzano, and Christian They can please come forward. And the first speaker we have is April Youngblatt.
Hello and good evening. My name is April Youngblatt, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to address you all regarding collective bargaining. As you know, PWE got 3,514 signatures in favor of collective bargaining, which means that at least half of your workforce did not sign a petition for it. Have you considered that the teachers' union in our county is optional for your employees? And by approving collective bargaining, you would be forcing at least half of your workforce into a union situation. In 1977, Virginia banned collective bargaining. Are you familiar with Article III of the Labor Code of Virginia, which states, "No employer shall require any person as a condition of employment to pay any dues of any kind to any labor union." So what happens to your workforce who didn't sign the petition? PWEA is using the slogan, "A Seat at the Table." The thing is, they already have a seat at the table. They just won't sit down. Have you considered what collective bargaining will do to your power and influence as a school board? The school board is comprised of elected officials. In theory, you are supposed to represent your constituents. This is supposed to work like a democracy, where we collectively have a voice on all these issues. We vote for you, you represent us, we all work together. What happens to this democratic process when the teachers' union has the biggest seat at the table? In the fall of 2021, PWE pushed the school board very hard to not reopen the schools. They were very misguided, and they influenced all of you, and they helped you create and implement some very bad policies that hurt our children. According to your new strategic plan, 72.4% of the students in our county are considered a minority. Did you catch the recent Harvard study that shows racial and economic achievement gaps widened during the COVID-19 virtual learning lockdowns, which were supported by PWEA and all the other unions? Minority children aren't the only ones suffering from these bad policies. Have you seen the U.S. Surgeon General's advisory on the youth mental health crisis? That advisory states, "The pandemic added to the pre-existing challenges the America's youth has faced." I'm running out of time, but I just implore you, take a look at the research that's available to you. Google it. Bigger unions are not good for education, and they're not good for the students. The petition for collective bargaining is not representative of your workforce. It doesn't support the mission and vision laid out in the strategic plan, and it doesn't address a problem, because the problem isn't a seat at the table. That problem doesn't exist. I implore you, vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Emmett Fletcher?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. McDade. Well, I'm here to talk about some good news, the four courageous women in Prince William County, and also the Dunfries Cemetery. Ms. Norma Fields and Mrs. Bonner Reese was very inspirational in recognizing there was a need to clean the cemetery. For years, the cemetery had been neglected, and these brave two women, they organized the community, and they got the fraternities and the NAACP behind them to make sure that this happened. And today, there are the Vine Nine, which is made up of African-Americans, fraternities, and sororities. And I'm proud to say Omega Psi Phi leads the way as far as the cleanup. We also have community leaders that come out, Mr. Harry Wiggins, John Standback, Tony Fields. All these people show up all during the year, and we keep the cemetery clean. And we want to thank the school board for your support. Also, Mrs. Bailey has been very instrumental in with the markers for the Slave Cemetery. So we do have some good news tonight. It's not all about collective bargaining. I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. We have a ways to go, but together, we can achieve our goal. So again, thank you for the support with the Dunfries Slave Cemetery. And Mrs. Brown, as Mrs. Jesse indicated, she didn't want a school named after her. She's 84 years old, and she's still very young. So thank you so much for your time and your support. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Next, we have Brandi Provenzano.
Good evening. My name is Brandi Provenzano, and my address is on file. Last week, the tragedy in Texas broke our nation's heart. It led us to hug our children a little tighter, read to them a little longer, peek in on them for one last look, and say a prayer of both sorrow and gratitude the next morning when we sent them off to school. And somehow, SOL scores and learning loss didn't seem quite so important to us anymore. While everyone has their ideas about school reform, gun control, mental health issues, and school safety, I think we can all agree on one thing. There is nothing, absolutely nothing, more precious or more important than our children. And who spends so many hours with them each day? We do. There wasn't someone from central office, or a curriculum developer, or a former school board member in the room with those children. It was their teachers. Those teachers could have told you what their students had for dinner the night before, or which students had a pet at home, or which ones wanted one. Those teachers could have told you about nanas and pop pops and big brothers that cuss a lot. They could have told you so many things, but they can't. They can't tell when there are no substitutes, that they have to combine classes, and students don't get instruction. They can't tell you that special education students aren't getting service minutes because a teacher quit mid-year last year and hasn't been replaced. They can't tell you any of this. They never could. Educators know, staff members know, bus drivers, coaches, secretaries, food service workers, nurses, social workers, psychologists, principals, assistant principals, they know. But it wouldn't make sense to ask them, those that know, would it? It wouldn't make sense to listen to them. It would be like asking parents and listening to them. Tonight, you're going to hear scare tactics about the costs associated with collective bargaining. These tactics are crafted to turn parents against staff members, which is exactly what is happening. But these staff members are asking for a voice to advocate for your children. Parents, I leave you with one question tonight. Who would you want in that room with your child? A lawyer, a former school board member, or their teacher? Who do you trust? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Ware, and my address is on file. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of collective bargaining for Prince William County teachers and staff. I'd like you to stop a minute, though, and imagine a teacher, or maybe a teacher your child had in the past. Possibly, they inspired your passion for a topic, or found a way to explain a challenging concept in a way to make it accessible to you. Collective bargaining is a way to give teachers like that a role in the decisions that impact them and the students they serve, and will be an aid in recruiting and retaining quality teachers for our county. Collective bargaining is not a new idea. Teachers in many other states already have it. Closer to home in Prince William, police and fire departments are making progress toward a collective bargaining ordinance, and other school districts in Virginia, including our neighbors in Arlington, have done the same. Now, it's been a very difficult year for all of us, and we've definitely felt that in education. Also, on a national level, we see a shortage of employees, and that shortage has especially hit education. Collective bargaining can help attract and retain the teachers that we need. At my school, or within my network of educator friends, I see the impact of these last few years. Teachers who are close to retirement deciding maybe they're a little closer, teachers who are new deciding to take a different path, or even the veteran teachers, you know, the backbone of the school, the ones that build the programs and train the new teachers. What really concerns me is when I see those teachers in tears or questioning, you know, what their life choice is. And one thing that has been a source of hope this year is the idea of collective bargaining, the thought that coming out on the other side of all of this, we're going to have more of a voice in what happens next. So think back to that teacher. What if instead of being in your life, they had retired, or moved to a different district, or left education altogether before you crossed paths? How would your educational experience be different? I know for me, without Ms. R., my third-grade teacher, my math knowledge might have stalled at it, the fours times tables. Collective bargaining is a way to recruit and retain quality staff and use their expertise and input to improve student learning. I encourage the board to take the next steps toward collective bargaining for Prince William County teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to non-agenda items. Please continue to use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. Going to call the first five names, Kimberly Stewart, Priscilla Hall, Tammy Fick, Stephanie Evers, Emily Cherry. First, we have Kimberly Stewart.
My name is Kimberly Stewart, and my address is on file. Today, as I entered this building to come speak to you as a concerned citizen, parent, and educator, I was greeted at the front door by a very visible police vehicle outside, several security guards, a metal detector, a search of my bag, and multiple more armed police officers and guards as I came in the room to take a seat. As I stand here to speak to you now, I can see at least two security guards flanked on either side of me, and I know there's one at the back of the room behind me. How can this board justify all this security to protect the entire, or I'm sorry, how can this board justify this security but not provide the security at our schools? Our elementary schools have absolutely no full-time security guard on duty throughout the school day, and they have no permanent individual student resource officer. And we do not have any program consistent throughout the county that allows retired veterans or officers to support our schools through volunteer positions. We can afford laptops for every single student in this county, but have we thought about affording a bulletproof backpack insert for all of our children? This board can find hundreds of thousands of dollars for equity and inclusion, but can't provide the proper investments to give all of our children and staff a safer and more secure learning environment. Our teachers are asked to not only educate our children, advise them, mentor, nurse, and protect them, but by law, we require to ensure that they are fully trained, prepared, and practiced in the event of an active shooter. Why do we continue to rely on our educators and staff, who should be focused on providing a world-class education, to also be asked to provide increased safety and security for our children as trained emergency active shooter responders? Our elementary schools have 500-plus students each day at each school, no full-time armed security guard. Our middle schools welcome over 1,500 each daily, and our high schools host over 2,500 daily, and minimal student-to-security-guard and SRO ratio. This is not an effective strategy to deter the types of threats that prevent risk, harm, and God forbid, death to our students and staff. I will reserve the remainder of my time to not only pay tribute to those incredible, beautiful children and the teachers whose lives were lost, but to allow you, as a school board, members, to quietly reflect on your own security as you sit here tonight compared to the lack of security you invest in our children and our staff. You are protected by guns, you are protected by guards, you are protected by police. It is time to afford those protections to our children. I will remain the last 10 seconds in silence. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, Tammy Fick?
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Tammy Fick, and my address is on file. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As I begin, I want you to imagine for a moment that it's morning and you're ready to go to work. As usual, you have important things to do, but alas, your ride is running late, so you end up being late for work. Now, imagine you've had a long, hard day at work. You're exhausted, and you just want to go home. But again, your ride is late, and you have to stay at work 30 to 45 minutes longer, waiting with coworkers for your ride home. Doesn't sound very pleasant, does it? This is the life of our students, especially at the elementary school level. Listen to the string of emails that I received one morning about buses. May 6, 7:04 a.m., Bus 643 has been substituted with Bus 796 for the morning route. 7:53, Bus 796 has been substituted with Bus 529 for the morning route. 8:07, Bus 529 has been substituted with Bus 336 for the morning route. 8:37 a.m., Bus 336 has now been substituted with Bus 624 for the morning route. This is the morning my students arrived to school two hours late. They missed two hours of instruction right before SOL time. One bus driver had this to say. This driver shortage is getting too many drivers, including me. We have so many callouts and people off with not enough drivers. We had a driver yesterday that I know of driving six routes in the afternoon. We usually have three. This job is so stressful. The drivers are mentally drained this year. Dispatch is doing the best they can, but guys, it's bad. To make it worse, they don't get bonuses or anything extra on their review. It doesn't matter how many extra routes they help and volunteer to do, their evaluations still say meeting standards. What? What incentive do they have to keep working their butts off? Now, the students, think of the kindergartners, our babies, six years old, having a long day at school. They just want to go home, see their family, have an after-school snack and play. But driver shortages mean sometimes these babies don't get home in time for dinner. And the teachers? Oh, wait, that's right. Staff members get paid to stay late for buses. The other day, we had not one, not two, but four buses that were late. That was 120 students waiting for their buses. Only two staff members get paid to stay after. That's 120 kids for two students. These bus drivers deserve a seat at the table also, and to be treated with respect and given the pay that they deserve, enough is enough. Let's bring this to a vote.
Again, please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, and we ask that your audience, please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. Next, we have Stephanie Evers. Next, we have Stephanie Evers. Emily Cherry.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and members of the board. My name is Emily Cherry, and my address is on file. By today, every teacher in Prince William County has completed a mandatory training course to help us better understand healing-centered engagement. This training is part of PWCS HEALS, a culture of care. The training states, "For healing to take place, participants must feel empowered in making decisions for their lives." An entire module of the culture of care training is about agency, which the training defines as the individual and collective power to act to create and change personal conditions as well as external systems. This module tells us that in order to create a culture of care, which is fundamental to the strategic plan and vision of Prince William County schools, it is key that we, teachers, model how to self-advocate through personal agency. I'm here today to put my training into practice and to advocate for collective bargaining for Prince William County School employees. Without it, we have no agency. There is no culture of care for students without a culture of care for employees, too. As teachers, this year, we desperately need a culture of care. Hybrid learning, canvas, data collection, covering for other teachers due to short staffing, no planning, a pandemic, school shootings, differentiation, a mental health care crisis, testing, learning loss. As teachers, our load is heavy, and every day, it seems like it's getting heavier. At my school, we work in teams. Of my four-person team, only one teacher will be returning to our school next year. Another is taking another position in the county, and the other half of our team is leaving Prince William County Schools and education altogether. When I asked a colleague that is leaving the teaching profession why she had decided to leave, she said, "I started teaching to make a difference, and I used to love it. But now it seems like no matter how hard I work, no how many hours I work, no matter what I do, it's never enough. It doesn't make any difference at all. There's just so much, and there's more every day, and there's just no joy anymore." What my colleague described is being burnt out. Teachers are burnt out and retired. But healing can happen. The PWCS HEALS culture of care states, "For healing to take place, participants must feel empowered to make decisions for their own lives." Let us have the empowerment to make decisions for our lives and for our workplace. Give us agency. Grant us collective bargaining rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Next, we have the remainder of speakers. I'm going to call them to the front. Chris Funderberg, Aubrey Vericon, Amy McCarthy, Margaret Follet, Richard Jesse. First, we have Chris Funderberg. You may approach the podium, Mr. Funderberg.
I feel like Sisyphus sometimes. Hello, my name is Chris Funderberg. My address is on file. I have two things I want to address tonight. First, Nicole Lewis, Chairwoman of the Safe Schools Advisory Committee, slandered me last week. As a member of that council, she was representing PWCS. Not removing her for office would show that you're not serious about being a good example to students. Second, the meteoric rise of the number of youth identifying as trans is undeniable. In the U.S., it has increased four times in just a few years. In the U.K., it has increased 4,000% in a decade. Why is this worrying? It's worrying because the rate of suicide attempts among the trans youth population is twice the rate of the rest of the population. Some might say, "This is why we must affirm gender identity choices," but that is a self-licking ice cream cone. Affirming gender identity children, let alone adolescents, will set them up to make choices that they can't come back from. Taking hormones or having gender-affirming surgery will cause permanent changes. I and many others believe that what we are seeing is rapid-onset gender dysphoria, ROGD. It's a form of social contagion, like TikTok challenges or everybody wanting the latest pair of Air Jordans. Here's a quote from Psychology Today. Quote, "Litman raises cautions about encouraging young people's desire to transition in all instances. From the cases reviewed in her study, she concluded that what she terms 'rapid-onset gender dysphoria' appears to be a novel condition that emerges from cohort and contagion effects and novel social pressures. From this perspective, ROGD likely exhibits an etiology and epidemiology that is distinct from the classic cases of gender dysphoria documented in the DSM. Litman hypothesizes that ROGD can be cast as a maladaptive coping mechanism for other underlying mental health issues such as trauma or social maladjustment, but also for other exceptional traits like high IQ and giftedness. The peer support, prestige, and identity leverage by the youth who proudly come out as trans certainly appears to be protective in their circles." End quote. Adolescence is a hard time for many teenagers. They don't feel comfortable in their skin, or they have other mental health issues, but see the pedestal that trans kids are put on and try it out. They get all the attention and affirmation they were seeking and unable to previously find. They become convinced that they are trans by peers and teachers, and to be truly happy, they must be their authentic self. To put it succinctly, we are creating trans youth, who then go on to get affirmation surgery and take hormones. When this doesn't address the underlying mental health issues, or they realize that they aren't trans and have destroyed their body, they're in an even worse place. We can strive to prevent bullying of everybody, LGBT or straight, without pushing an ideology on children that is going to boomerang with devastating consequences. We can help the exceedingly rare trans kids without creating a time bomb. Thank you.
Thank you. Aubrey Vericon?
Good evening. My name is Aubrey Vericon, and I'm a fourth-year teacher in the county, and I live in the Brentsville School District. I am one of the fortunate employees who are able to live and work here in Prince William County due to the dual income of my husband and myself. We have two children who are not of school age yet. I can only imagine the burden brought on so many of my colleagues and their families living outside of the county with long commutes, high inflation, and the continued struggle with providing our employees a livable wage. The stressors that come with this impact their families' lives financially and personally. I am not here because I want to be here, or even that I feel comfortable speaking tonight because I do not. I am here because after two months and 14 days after our educators have organized, we still wait for your vote on collective bargaining. Teachers have to sign their contracts by this Friday, and they still don't know if they have the support from the school board on collective bargaining. Teachers and staff in this school district are overworked and underpaid, but most of all, we are tired. We are tired not for doing our jobs, but for doing our jobs and picking up the pieces from lack of staffing. We feel the consequences of our division's inability to fully staff our schools. There is a substitute teacher shortage. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. Teachers are quitting before the school year is even over. This is all coming at a huge cost. Our students, educators, and our families are paying the cost. It is costing our students their world-class education. What is an administrator supposed to do if their middle-school English teacher has had enough and leaves before the school year is over, before SOLs even happen? Who is going to prepare these students? The subs in this county are amazing. I was a sub in this county for two years. I have a college education and a license to teach, but I would have no idea what to do if I was asked to sub a middle-school English class if I didn't have plans. Who makes those plans when a teacher has no intention of coming back? I'm here to ask you to do your jobs. We have done ours. It's past time you act. Vote yes to collective bargaining and utilize this tool to help recruit adequate staffing for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy McCarthy?
Good evening, Dr. McDade, members of the school board. My name is Amy McCarthy, and my address is on file. In response to the unprecedented times, teachers and school staff have taken part in countless trainings to gain the necessary skills to deal with the trauma and setbacks that families, excuse me, schools and communities have experienced these past two years. Ask anyone of my staff, I'm a huge fan of trainings, and I'm serious when I say that. I've taken every one. I've become an SEL coach at my school. I thoroughly enjoyed the trainings presented through that process. And in the recent SEL trainings, we have focused on mental health, teacher burnout, and staff well-being. I also attended a two-day conference focused on trauma-informed schools, which looked at innovative approaches to discipline, restorative practices, and once again, coincidentally, the well-being of staff. Additionally, the most recent training that I completed was on creating school communities based around equity, which directly supports the county's strategic plan, with, once again, teacher well-being being a prominent focus. In every single training, all sponsors, Kaiser Permanente, Healthier Generations, Castle, and the Prince William County Schools, stressed that people need to be part of the decision-making process, especially when they are affected by the results. Any teacher knows this. They allow their students to buy in to whatever they are teaching and run with those ideas. The same is true for staff. This was true with wellness and agency, wellness and social justice, and wellness as a scale. To create a cultural shift of equity, leadership, relationships, community engagement, and agency, our educators deserve to be part of the decision-making process. If the county believes in their own training and those they provide their employees, then our leaders must include teachers in the decision-making to tackle our ambitious strategic plan and numerous vacancies. In the agency module of the HEALS training, our new Equity Officer, Dr. Lucretia Brown, asks this question. "How do we transform our day-to-day routine operations so that all staff and students experience respect, a sense of belonging, and fairness?" The answer is simple, and it starts with collective bargaining. The time is now to give our educators the human right of having a voice in the process that affects us every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Follet? All right. Richard Jesse?
My name is Richard Jesse, and my address is on file. I want to talk a couple items here. We talked about safety at school, and I have one suggestion to have considered. One of the concerns we had with the shooting this week was how did the person get into the school? And a door was either ajar or didn't lock properly. I would recommend that we put on our doors at the schools, we have 90 to 100 schools, I can guarantee you that somebody left the door open today. That is not uncommon. They know better, but they still do it. In a home, you can put sensors on doors and windows, and the central office will know if a door is open or a window is open. So that's one thing. The other thing that the other speaker spoke about is the SRO officers. Yes, they can help, but they're not a full-fledged thing. Every time you look around at the, up in New York, the person there was killed. If you have a person with AR-15 and you have a pistol, if you don't hit the person with that pistol in the head right away, you're dead. Those guns, I think. Guns are the problem. In Virginia, we have taken steps to tighten up our gun laws. We are not like Texas and some of the other states. So I would continue to say guns are something that we really need to look at. We have done a lot of good things in the last three or four years in Virginia so that guns are not as easily obtained, but when you are bordered by other states, flows over. The last thing I'd like to say is that we're talking about the students for the school board. I'd like you to consider this. Instead of adults selecting the students, why don't you have the students run for their seat in all their high schools and let the students select who they would like to be represented? Then, after you get those people elected, have them select who comes and represent them on the school board here on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda is 1501, A Student Representative Matters for Information. It's on, yeah, may I skip that, then? Okay, thank you. All right. Then following, we have 1502, Appointment and Announcement of Student Representatives for 2023. I need a motion.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Chance Williams and Donna Sharif as the student representatives to the Prince William County School Board, and appoint Christian Daniels as the alternate student representative to the Prince William County School Board for the 2022-23 school year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Jesse? Any discussion?
Madam Vice Chair? I just wanted to take this opportunity again to thank the board for their continuous support of this program, and to thank all of the students who applied. It is my understanding that all but one school had students who applied for this program. I look forward to working with the new student representatives next year.
Mrs. Jesse? Any further discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Latif Ralston, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving to superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I want to begin the superintendent's time addressing the most recent school incident in Texas. We are saddened by the tragic school shooting that occurred on May 24 in Uvalde, Texas. Our hearts and prayers are extended to the victims and their families. There are no words to share to adequately express the sorrow we feel for the lives lost and those forever changed. The safety of our students and staff is top of mind as we struggle to process this tragic event. PWCS works closely with the Prince William County Police Department on a daily basis, and the police department has provided extra special attention on all of our schools within the county. Through our memorandum of understanding with the Prince William County Police Department, middle and high schools have school resource officer support. The staffing of SROs is determined by the police department and funded by the county. Additionally, I meet regularly with Police Chief Peter Newsome to ensure collaboration in supporting the needs of Prince William County Public Schools. At the elementary school level, community safety officers and security patrol provide continuous support. Our Risk Management and Security Services Department provides active threat response training at schools with age-appropriate resources to students to ensure safety in a crisis. In addition, every main school entry is limited by a secure buzzer access system. We frequently assess our safety protocols to ensure timely improvement if needed. The Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is designed especially for students in grades six through 12, and for staff to report concerns of potentially unsafe behavior. This is the best tool for our students to report anything other than reporting an incident directly to a school administrator or security. This system is monitored around the clock. Earlier this spring, Prince William County Public Schools hired an external company that specializes in security audits to do a top-to-bottom review of our security processes, and we are in the process of finalizing this audit, which will help us to continue to update and improve our school's security measures. Before closing this evening, I do want to congratulate our 2022 graduates. Although I will not be able to attend every graduation ceremony in the county, I do look forward to celebrating our outstanding students at ceremonies scheduled in the next several days. We are very proud of the accomplishments of all of our graduates and look forward to witnessing the positive impact that they each will have on their communities, on our county, on our country, and our world. on our county, on our country, and our world.
Madam Chair, this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Next on the agenda is that we have collective bargaining update for information. This item is on for information, and we will turn it over to Division Counsel, Wade Anderson. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce, for the collective bargaining update, Eric Paultel, who's assisting us, and of course, Dr. Eagle will also be presenting.
Thank you, Wade. Thank you, members of the board. Let me just tell you a little bit about my background and what I'll be talking about tonight. So I have been practicing law for thirty-five years. Most of my career has been spent up in Maryland representing public sector employers, primarily cities and counties, and collective bargaining with labor organizations. I have drafted collective bargaining ordinances. I have negotiated labor agreements. I've handled grievance arbitrations. My wife and I are UVA grads, so in 2020, we ended up relocating from Maryland down to Virginia. I opened a Charlottesville office for my law firm. I continue to represent public sector employers in collective bargaining, both in Maryland and now in Virginia as well. So what I'm going to be doing is explaining the collective bargaining process and kind of where we are with Prince William County Schools at this stage. If I can get the slides to work. So this is a brief overview of what's on the agenda tonight. First off, brief definition of what collective bargaining is. This is a dictionary definition, so to speak. In simple terms, it's really the process of a labor organization and an employer getting together and meeting and working to try to reach agreement on a contract which governs the terms and conditions of employment. And those terms and conditions will be specified in whatever enabling ordinance or resolution would be created by the public sector employer. So Virginia changed dramatically in the 2020 General Assembly session. As we've heard earlier tonight, up to that time, Virginia was one of a handful of states in the United States that did not permit collective bargaining in the public sector. There was 1977 Supreme Court of Virginia authority expressly prohibiting that after it had been granted to some degree, I believe, in the Arlington County Schools. So in the 2020 General Assembly session, the law changed, and effective May of 2021, localities, including school boards, were empowered to enact collective bargaining legislation and to recognize and bargain with unions representing their employees. Under the enabling legislation, a board can either on its own enact a collective bargaining resolution or ordinance, or, as has happened here with Prince William County Schools, a group of employees can initiate the process by submitting a certification from a majority of employees in a proposed bargaining unit, asking the board to take a vote within a hundred and twenty days on whether or not to adopt or not adopt a resolution. And it's key to keep in mind, nothing in the enabling legislation passed by the General Assembly requires the board to either enact a resolution or to recognize a labor organization. This slide here gives us a brief overview of where we are and the time, the various steps in the process that we have been through. On March 18th of 2022, Prince William County Schools received a certification for collective bargaining from the Prince William Education Association on behalf of certified employees. That March 18th receipt of certification triggered the running of the 120-day deadline. On March 24th, the school board received a presentation and adopted a collective bargaining certification vote process. That process was modified a bit on April the 6th of 2022, and on May 10th of 2022, PWCS verified that the signatures that had been submitted along with that certification were sufficient to indicate that a majority of certified employees had shown their support for collective bargaining. Tonight, June 1st, we're here receiving the presentation that Dr. Eagle and I are going to be doing. There's a possibility the board can consider whether to allow collective bargaining in its June 15th meeting, and the deadline for making that decision would be July 16th, 2022, which is 120 days after the March 18th submission of the certification. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Eagle for a bit, and then I will come back to talk a little more about collective bargaining.
Thank you. So it's my purpose tonight to just provide you with an overview of our existing meet and confer process. We were discussing today how long the meet and confer process has been in place here at Prince William County Public Schools, and we believe it's actually been in place since 1988. We found records back to the late 1990s, but in consultation with a former senior leader, he did believe it's been in practice since 1988. The authority for this process is School Board Policy 508, which is Communications with Employees, which directs the superintendent to maintain formal and informal channels of communications with employee organizations, but does not dictate a specific procedure. So we have developed a procedure, and I'll review that with you, with our two employee associations, which are the Prince William Education Association and the Virginia Professional So the first step in the process is to actually develop the meet and confer committee, which there are two teams, the management team and the employee association team. And the, each association, both the VPE and the PWEA, has an employee association team. The management team is typically chosen with an eye towards knowledge of the impact that the potential proposals would have on the division, and with the goal of being able to provide realistic feedback and education to the employee organizations regarding the feasibility of the request. And typically, on the committee is the Director of Human Resources, the Finance Director, the Director of Compensation and Benefits, the Director of Instruction, along with a principal representative from each of the respective levels, elementary, middle, and high school. On the employee association team, it varies by the association, but with the PWEA, typically the team numbers from six to eight representatives are chosen by the association, and in the past, it has been led by their vice president. With the VPE, we deal directly with the State Director of the Virginia Professional Educators. So once the teams are comprised, we actually put out a schedule, a meeting schedule to take place over the course of the school year. And typically, in the past, I've participated in the meet and confer process for the past four years. And in prior years, we limited the process to a fall event. This past school year, we expanded the process to have several meetings in the fall, and then a meeting in winter and early spring. We typically, the meeting schedule is laid out so that we have a meet-and-greet kickoff meeting, and in that meeting, we have a budgetary presentation typically presented by the, the Finance Director, which really serves as an important background to set expectations and build the foundation to support messaging, to support the rationale, to really set the context in terms of resources that we believe are going to be available in order to provide some further education on our ability to actually respond to requests that have a budgetary impact. Each team submits their issues in this initial meeting, and they also, all team members do sign a confidentiality agreement. And then from that, we actually have a couple of meetings this year. We, we basically receive the issues. Then the next step is, we meet with each association. We usually lay this out over a day, where we meet with one association in the morning, one in the afternoon, and we hear firsthand from members of the association team regarding more details about their specific issues. And in terms of those issues that are being brought up, or concerns, or topics, there is no defined limit to the topics that can be proposed, but associations are not permitted to submit individual concerns for discussion. So in our follow-up, basically, we listen to concerns, have follow-up meetings. We discuss, as a management team then, the concerns that are brought forward. We recommend proposed responses to those concerns, and those are submitted to the executive cabinet and ultimately the superintendent for approval. After that process, then we meet again with the associations and present our responses. This year, we also included in our meetings, members of executive cabinet, when we did the listening sessions, relevant to, you know, that were, for instance, if the topic was something concerning transportation, which we had some concerns this year, Mr. Shiroki attended in order to hear firsthand the concerns that were brought forth. So in addition to the management team, we also supplemented that with some members of the executive cabinet. In terms of the ultimate decision-making, though, it, on the list of topics and the concerns brought forward, the decisions are ultimately approved by the cabinet and the superintendent, and then shared with the organizations. This process does not result in any kind of written agreement, but decisions may be incorporated into regulations, guidance, or other implementation vehicles.
Getting back to the enabling legislation passed by the General Assembly in 2020, there are certain constraints imposed on the collective bargaining process. Perhaps first and foremost, the enabling legislation expressly provides that no collective bargaining resolution, no collective bargaining ordinance, may in any way restrict the authority of Board of Supervisors or any other governmental authority to establish budgets or appropriate funds. All plenary authority must be retained by the board. Additionally, independent of that enabling legislation, as you all know, the school board does not have taxing authority. Anything that it agrees to with a labor organization must ultimately be appropriated by the Prince William County Board of Supervisors. So that's another constraint on the ability of the Prince William County School Board to engage in collective bargaining. Additionally, getting back to the ordinance again, what was passed by the General Assembly is very Spartan, I think for lack of a better term. There's no creation of a statewide labor board or detailed guidance on how to engage in the process. If one were to contrast what's been done in Virginia with what I'm more familiar with in Maryland over my career, Maryland has a very detailed statewide statute on collective bargaining in, for schools. There's no such guidance out of the Virginia General Assembly. Another constraint is that the legislation expressly prohibits employees from striking in support of their collective bargaining positions. And then finally, there is an interplay between existing state requirements, for example, state-mandated grievance procedures for teachers that cannot be superseded by a collective bargaining agreement. So this slide is kind of a high-level overview of what would be in a potential collective bargaining resolution in the event the board were to choose to go in that direction. One, the top row there is a determination of what are the bargaining units that can engage in collective bargaining, how many are there, and what they are. In addition to that, there are certain employees or individuals who are excluded from the ability to participate in collective bargaining. I'll talk about more of this in a subsequent slide. The second row talks about the certification process. How would a labor organization come in? There's first what's called a showing of interest, which is something that's submitted to show that the employees in a certain unit wish to have an election. Once that showing of interest is deemed to be adequate, you progress to an actual election process, and then you have a similar process for decertifying a labor organization in the event that the bargaining unit ultimately decides they wish to either have no union representation or change to a different collective bargaining representative. Third row on this slide talks about the collective bargaining process and, and the ordinance, or the resolution, I should say, would specify a timetable for the initiation and completion of the collective bargaining process, as well as a ratification process, both ratification by the bargaining unit and ratification by the school board. The next row talks about prohibited unfair labor practices, and the resolution would specify certain conduct, both by a labor organization and by the board, that would be deemed to be unfair labor practices or illegal actions by either party. The next row is a mechanism for the administration of the collective bargaining provisions, and here, what happens is a professional neutral, could be a labor arbitrator, somebody with background in labor relations, is brought in to administer the election process, to administer the interpretation of the collective bargaining resolution, to hear and decide unfair labor practice proceedings. And this individual can either be someone who is engaged on a contractual basis for a certain period of time by the board, or is engaged on a case-by-case basis, depending upon whether it's the election, or maybe it's an unfair practice charge that arises. So there's a couple options in the way in which you would engage that neutral. And the last part of this slide is an impasse process, and the resolution would likely have some type of mechanism for resolving an impasse in the bargaining process, where the, the board and the labor organization are unable to come to agreement on a collective bargaining agreement. In that case, there needs to be a mechanism to resolve that. That can be done through mediation, which is non-binding. And then if mediation is unsuccessful, the option would be either binding or non-binding arbitration. But all of this, again, is subject to the caveat that nothing can constrain the authority of the Board of Supervisors to establish budgets or appropriate funds. So digging a little bit deeper into the subject of what's an appropriate bargaining unit, the first question would be how many units there are, what they are. Then you have the question of which employees are eligible to be in those bargaining units, and the obverse of that would be which individuals are excluded from the eligibility to participate in the collective bargaining process. And typically, it would be elected officials, supervisory employees, confidential employees, which would typically be individuals who work in HR with Dr. Eagle, or Division Counsel's office, or other individuals with access to personnel information or fiscal information. And then temporary and intermittent employees, and finally, volunteers who really aren't even employees. These are all typically excluded, but they're not required to. All of these things are options that the board would have in drafting its collective bargaining resolution. There's nothing mandated by the Virginia code as to what classes of employees or individuals can and cannot participate in the bargaining process. For the certification process, this is the election process, where the employees would vote whether they wished to have a labor union come in. This can be, this has to be done pursuant to Virginia law by a secret ballot election. This is mandated by code. You can't have what's called a card check. The employees actually have to be given a chance to vote in a secret ballot, but it can be either in-person or by mail ballot. That's, again, an option the board would have to decide whether you want to do mail ballot as a preference. as a preference or in-person as a preference. The last subject that I want to talk about in terms of what would be in the resolution would be the determination of what are the subjects that the Board and employees are required to bargain over. Again, this is something which is, for the most part, left entirely up to the Board to decide what subjects are matters of negotiation. It could be narrow in scope or it could be broad in scope. So the categories of subjects that are bargained are broken down into three different subcategories. There's mandatory subjects, permissive subjects, and prohibited subjects. So mandatory subjects would be those topics that are put into the ordinance that are specified as matters that the Board and the union must bargain over. Typically, what I've seen in my experience and my career in Maryland is wages and benefits are almost always mandatory subjects. Beyond that, topics can be either permissive or mandatory. And what I've listed here on this slide are examples of the kinds of things that could be either permissive or mandatory. And that would be hours, work schedules, vacation, leave, holidays, health and safety. There's many more, but those are just examples of the kinds of things that could or could not be mandatory subjects. And then there are the prohibited subjects of bargaining. And these would be topics that either by state law the parties cannot bargain over or matters that the Board basically reserves to itself and says, "These are not matters that we would negotiate." So in terms of things mandated by law, examples would be the Virginia retirement system benefits, the grievance process, and anything else that would restrict the authority of the Board to establish or appropriate funds. But in addition to those matters governed by state law, what we've seen in the other Virginia jurisdictions that have enacted collective bargaining ordinances is, most of the time, the governing authority reserves to itself the exclusive authority to manage certain aspects of the employment relationship. And those matters are deemed prohibited subjects of bargaining. They are not negotiated with the union. So that's something which can be determined by the Board in crafting any collective bargaining resolution. So finally, the question of the resources that might be needed in the event the Board were to move forward with collective bargaining. The cost, for the most part, will be driven by what the scope of the collective bargaining resolution is. It's, if it's very narrow in scope, you're going to need less legal staff, less human resources staff. You're not going to be spending as much time in negotiations and mediations and impasse proceedings or labor arbitrations. If it's broader in scope, then you should expect to see a significant increase in the amount of time and, of course, money that would be spent on human resources, labor negotiator that might be hired on an in-house basis to negotiate for the Board, perhaps an in-house attorney brought in to assist Division Counsel with labor relations matters, possibly the use of outside counsel to assist, and then the outside neutral to manage the interpretation of the collective bargaining resolution, the election process, or to hear and decide unfair labor practice proceedings. So that is our high-level overview. Dr. Eagle and I are wide open to any questions that any members of the Board may have about the process.
Thank you for the presentation. Right now, we're going to give an opportunity for Board members to ask two to three questions each and, if needed, clarifying question. And we'll just go down the line. And if you don't have a question, just say pass, and then we'll go back again. Mr. Wilk, are you okay starting?
I am good. The information item, and I already asked my questions in a previous meeting.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have is you've worked in Maryland and you're aware of how their procedures and things work. Their employees cannot strike either, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and their school boards cannot appropriate funds?
That's correct.
So what do they do with wages and benefits, which you said was like, kind of, the number-one thing that we put in collective bargaining agreements?
So the agreements typically do require, or they do govern wages and benefits. It, of course, has to be ultimately approved by the governing, in Maryland, we would call them commissioners typically, or sometimes it's council members. But commissioners would essentially receive a draft collective bargaining agreement that's been negotiated by a local school board and its labor organization that is submitted to the commissioners or the council members. And then they decide whether or not to appropriate the funds to allocate the resources for the wages and benefits that were agreed to in that draft agreement.
And how long have they had collective bargaining in Maryland?
It has been, I think, at least, I've been doing this 35 years, and it was certainly well-established when I got into practice. So I'm saying, I would guess, at least 40 to 50 years.
And one of the, so I, a couple of years ago, went back and looked at every single school district in Maryland and read, I read the teacher contract because I am a teacher, and I figured that was a good place to start in my study. And I noticed that in Maryland, many of their contracts have very similar language and, you know, things that they put in there. I think Montgomery County's was probably the most in-depth and longest. And then there were several, maybe smaller districts, that had, you know, basically the same thing. Do they have, like, a template that they use that's, you know, they're working from?
So, yes, one big difference between Maryland and the Virginia model is that, at least for teachers in Maryland, you have statewide legislation that specifies what the matters covered by collective bargaining are. So you have a whole process that's set up in the Maryland Code that applies to every jurisdiction. So that, in turn, results in most of the collective bargaining agreements looking very similar because they're all working off of the same playbook, so to speak. Virginia has gone a very different direction, leaving it to each locality to make that decision.
So, it sounds like our guidance is going to rely on, you know, knowing what the state code says, whether we can or can't do something. And then sort of the, I don't know, I don't want to say limitations, but sort of like what's, I don't know what the right word is maybe here. But if we're looking at trying to create an agreement, we're really working from scratch at this point.
That's correct. I mean, the General Assembly, for better or worse, gave governing authorities very, very little guidance here. Other than saying you can't do anything to restrict the power of the purse, so to speak, localities have very, very broad discretion. And you could craft something very different from what Arlington may do or what Nalden may do.
Well, and that would also speak to, I mean, each of these districts are funded differently. For example, we get about half of our money from the state. Fairfax County gets only 20% from the state. So the funding formulas are different. The agreements are going to have to look different because, you know, many, many different things. But I would imagine that would be a big consideration as well.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I will stop now, thank you. I just wanted to kind of clarify those couple of points just because, you know, I did spend the time looking at those agreements, and they seemed awfully similar from place to place. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I, my first question is a meet-and-confer question. How often do management and those association teams, the two association teams, meet generally then? I know you dressed it generally, but from, if, would it, would it be correct to say a couple of meetings in the fall, a meeting in the winter, and a meeting in the spring? Or are there more regular meetings with PWA leadership that occur in the context of that meet-and-confer process?
Within the context of the meet-and-confer process, in the past, we had an opening meeting, a meet-and-greet, a meeting to discuss issues, and then a feedback meeting. This year, we expanded the process, and we had the opening meeting, a meeting to discuss the issues, and then a feedback meeting. And then we had two additional meetings. I believe one was in January this year and one was in March. The March meeting was brief. It was just about setting schedules up for this coming year. So we did expand it in the event that there were additional issues. In terms of other meetings routinely and ongoing, it's outside of the meet-and-confer process, but we do meet weekly with the Uniserv Directors for the PWA and the State Director for VPE on Tuesdays. And that's the HR Leadership Team, myself, Director of Benefits and Compensation, and the Director of HR.
Okay, thank you. And in those kinds of meetings, I mean, obviously, you can't tell me what exactly is discussed, but those are where issues and concerns can be brought up as well?
Yes, we discuss, you know, anything we feel like we need feedback on, any kind of, you know, potential initiatives that we might be rolling out, that we would like their feedback on. We also discuss any concerns that they bring to the table. So it's a two-way discussion, you know, regarding issues or concerns or new initiatives that we're rolling out in the division because they share lots of great feedback on things we might want to think about and consider in that process.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like it's actually a really productive process that we have. I'm aware that the meet-and-confer process that PWCS has maintained over the years has been the subject of study and emulation among other school divisions across Virginia. And so I think it's a good, it's a good process. Under, this is a, this is a collective bargaining question. Under a typical collective bargaining negotiation, having never participated in one, I'm trying to get my, wrap my head around what it looks like. Would it be lawyers for management and lawyers for the union who would be seated at the table?
It is not required, and I'm not even sure it's typical. I would say, in my anecdotal observation in Maryland, it's probably 50/50 split between when lawyers are present and lawyers are not. So let me tell you about my experience, because obviously, a lawyer is always present when I'm there. You're going to have two teams. You'll have the county team or the Board team, which would have typically myself as an attorney, being the lead spokesperson. Then you'll have maybe three or four other persons representing the county or the Board, a human resources person, maybe a finance person, maybe a couple of other folks. And then you have the union team on the other side of the table. And oftentimes, there is an attorney who's the lead spokesperson there. And then you'll have three or four members of the bargaining unit who are typically union officials, but not always, who participate on behalf of the union. But there are negotiations that take place that I'm not involved in, where there are no lawyers involved at all. Sometimes I'm involved, and the union does not have a lawyer. They just have somebody from the Union International or other union official do the negotiating on behalf of the union. So there's really no standard model out there.
Okay, thank you. I'll keep my questions for the next go-around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll have another round. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So just for my sort of understanding, I tend to be the person that kind of frames things in a very simplistic way or asks for a very simplistic framing. What I understand to be now, our meet-and-confer process, representatives from the school division, PWA unions as such, come to meet with the division, a team of the division, and they are essentially enabled to bring up any issue that they desire as long as it's not an individual issue. And conversations are then held back and forth, however many meetings the schedule presents, whatever that entails. The discussion is had. The division side, HR team, then will respond on what can or cannot be done, I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, based upon what we forecast our financial availability to be and, of course, state laws and such. Is that kind of how the process works?
Yes. In terms of the back and forth, I just want to be clear in that the issues are presented and then a meeting is held to discuss the topics.
Thank you.
And so, and then the management team formulates responses. They are ultimately approved by the cabinet and then meets again with the association team and reviews the responses.
So essentially, there's no limitation other than they cannot present individual, like, person A, I have a problem in XYZ school. Because as wonderful as this presentation is, I don't think the average person looking at this is going to be familiar to be able to digest a lot of this. I mean, I know for myself, we have been learning about this since it came upon the table. There's still a lot of questions. So I'm just trying to break it down as digestible as possible while keeping it high level. So I appreciate that. Then, my understanding then, collective bargaining is a process, obviously new to Virginia, and no one has experience with, that the burden of the scope and the entire process essentially rests within the governing body in the state of Virginia. So we could have a process that is very narrow and limiting in scope in what we're allowed to talk about. We could have a process that includes lots of things. But of course, those, all of those things have to be in compliance with state law and other governing regulations, so to speak. That sort of what we're, what you're saying?
That's a very good succinct summary of what's been granted to you by the General Assembly. It's up to the Board to decide how narrow or how broad the topics of bargaining are.
And what I understand to be the key factor is basically that, no matter what the Board permits to discuss, collective bargaining to be on the table for discussion, it can't in any way inhibit our budget. So we can't say, and I'm just making this up, we're going to spend a bazillion dollars on XYZ topic if we only have a half a bazillion dollars to work with. I know that sounds silly, but I think that's a major, a major point.
I mean, if effectively what you were doing was mandating that money be appropriated for something, then that would be a violation of the General Assembly's enabling legislation because it would be impinging upon the authority of the Board of Supervisors to establish the budget. You can't mandate that. That ultimate authority has to stay with the Board of Supervisors to fund or not fund.
Okay, because I think that makes a difference. And I think there's been a lot of conversation about that. But we, as a Board or a division, have not had that conversation. So I think it's a very important point along with the fact that, again, we have not done this, and there's a difference. I think we get compared a lot to the Board of County Supervisors, but they can tax and do things that school divisions cannot do. So I don't always believe that it's a fair apples-to-apples comparison when we look at that. Now, one of the things I saw on the impasse procedures is that arbitration was listed. But, correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot do any not, we can't do any binding arbitration, according to the statute, if I'm...
So it could be binding so long as it's all subject to the appropriations of the Board. So it's really not binding. If you look at what's been done in some of the other Northern Virginia jurisdictions, they may call it binding, but it has this asterisk, so to speak, that it's subject to the fact that it must be ultimately appropriated by the Board of Supervisors. And if they choose not to appropriate, the parties have to go back to the bargaining table. So it's really not binding. Now, you could have binding on purely non-monetary issues, but determining what is a non-monetary issue is not easy. There's many people who believe that everything that is agreed to, whether it's a change in schedules or a different paint color on the wall, has some fiscal impact. But technically, if the provisions of an agreement have no fiscal impact and therefore don't impact the budget, you could have binding arbitration on those non-fiscal matters.
Thank you. I only bring that up just as an illustration of one small part of how complex this process is and how everyone has a different understanding. I think there's still a lot of learning left to do. My last question, I'm going to wrap it up, is I think a lot of people are wondering, is when you enter into collective bargaining as a division, does this replace meet-and-confer? And typically, in your experience, what are we seeing in other divisions? Or we're not seeing, or do you know?
So my experience in Maryland is you're either meet-and-confer or it's collective bargaining. They don't coexist. I've participated in meet-and-confer models that look an awful lot like collective bargaining, but they're not. But I've never seen it where they both exist side by side.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions. You are going to be meeting with the Board members, right? You're doing the training for Board members?
I am not an attorney for the Board members, no.
Yeah, no, he is going to be doing the training, though, Ms. Jessie, yes.
Yes, I will be doing the training.
I'm sorry. That caught me off guard, but I'll ask my questions then, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, real round, this last round.
Yeah, real round, this last round, or?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, and, and this is more just for my own. Maybe you could help direct me versus having to call, like, individual school districts, but we've talked about Maryland. But, you know, where would I go to learn, like, why states like North Dakota, Indiana, Ohio, Iowa, Tennessee, Nebraska, Oklahoma, Wyoming, Kansas, South Dakota, Idaho? Where would I go to learn why, how those states allow their teachers collectively bargain? Because they do. Is there, like, a resource online, or does that require individual research or something like that?
I think it's probably a matter of state statute in, in most cases. I would, the typical model, I can't promise this is true in every one of those states, but typically, the state legislature will grant the authority to engage in collective bargaining to localities. And then, in, in Maryland, for example, the state went so far as to dictate what that model is for all of the localities, and there's some variance, variations within jurisdictions, but not much. Other states, in my experience, are more like what's been done in Virginia. They really leave it up to the individual city or county school board to make those determinations. And I think you'd probably have to look at Indiana, North Dakota, South Dakota, whatever, look at their legislation and see what they've done there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Agapour? Okay, Ms. Waugh?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Some people have asked me this question. If collective bargaining were to be adopted, what happens with the members of the workforce who are not a part of the union? Are they then going to be subject to every, I guess they would be subject to every decision that the union advocates for? And would they be required to be in the union, or is that something that would be in our, a kind of thing that we would negotiate as well?
So, a, a couple points here. In 2018, the Supreme Court decided a case called Janus versus AFSMI that specifically says that a public sector employee cannot be compelled to pay union dues. And even before that, employees could not be required to join, but they could be required to pay what was called a service fee or agency fee to the union. But since Janus, no employee can be forced to pay union dues against their will in the public sector. That being said, when a union is certified to be the representative of the employees in a bargaining unit, it's what's called the exclusive representative, and it means it represents everybody in that bargaining unit, whether they've chosen to be a member of the union or not, whether they pay dues or not, they are all represented by the union. Now, typically, in my experience, if someone's not a member, they do not have the right to vote on union matters. They can't vote on ratification of an agreement, they can't elect union officials, but they're still governed by the terms of that collective bargaining agreement. And in the resolution that might be passed by the board, you could, for example, include as, as an unfair labor practice, the act of a union not fairly representing somebody because they had chosen not to be a member. That could be made to be an illegal action if a union did not adequately represent somebody. So that's kind of a high-level explanation on the rights of non-members.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, because that is a concern that, obviously, I, and others have expressed. I mean, people have, have that concern, so I appreciate that clarification. Can I ask one more question? So I have a question about, if you could just elaborate just a little bit more on the statement of restricting the board's authority to establish budgets or appropriate funds. I'm having trouble kind of understanding what that kind of, what would that might look like, what, establishing a budget, establishing a budget or appropriating funds, and I don't know if that's an appropriate question to ask at this point, but that, that's the language in the statute.
Right.
And I'm having trouble thinking of a scenario or an example of what that kind of action might be.
So, so I think one good example would be, I think we had a question a little earlier about binding arbitration. So let's just take an example that the board chose to move forward with a collective bargaining resolution that includes binding arbitration. And it says that if the parties are unable to reach agreement on a collective bargaining agreement, then the matter shall be referred to binding arbitration, and the arbitrator's decision shall be binding upon the board and derivatively, the board of supervisors, which must appropriate the funds for that. That would be a clear violation of Virginia Code 40.157.2, which says that no provision of any ordinance or resolution can restrict a governing body's authority to establish a budget or appropriate funds. So I think that's probably the most clear example I can think of.
Okay, thank you. So basically, I mean, if we don't, if we don't have the money to accomplish a particular action item, then we can't be forced to pay for it anyway. I guess that's kind of the idea, right?
That, that's right. I mean, if you don't have the money, or
You don't have the money if you don't have the money.
The board chooses, I mean, the board can ultimately choose not to appropriate the money. Nothing can compel it to appropriate that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I, I, listening to this presentation, I hear a, a lot of, like, maybes and up in the air, and I appreciate you taking the time to introduce this basically to the members of the public because, again, we haven't had this discussion. So my, just to sort of wrap it up, it, when you have, I'm, I'm looking at the differences, essentially, from meet and confer and collective bargaining, and, again, to try to simplify it, it, it appears meet and confer, there's just a lot of discussion, not quite as limiting a voice or statements and things that could be brought up. And there's also, but no guarantee, no written document that comes out the end of it. And, and that's sort of my final sense in that. Am I missing anything in there at a high level?
I mean, I'll defer to Dr. Eagle, but I think that's correct.
I mean, we actually prepare written responses that are shared with the association team, but unless a particular topic results in, you know, a regulation change or an initiative that we're moving through the division, then no, there's nothing put in writing aside from the response that is prepared and shared with the association team, the written
Missing a legal, legal written agreement, basically.
There is no legal written, no.
But on the collective bargaining side, depending on whatever the governing body determines, it could be a very narrow voice that's heard, or a little bit larger scope voice, there's a, but there is, at the end, a legally binding agreement.
That's correct. There's what's, it's, it's a labor contract, and if a provision of the contract is violated, the parties typically have a remedy to go to arbitration before a, a neutral to decide whether or not there has been a violation of the agreement.
Okay, well, well, that's to be determined in the state of Virginia, too, because we're still trying to figure all that out. But no, I do appreciate that, because I think there's just so much information out there. But I think oftentimes, what happens is we're, we're comparing what Virginia is doing to Maryland or Ohio or Pennsylvania, and there's only so much comparison that could be done because unfortunately, the statute of Virginia didn't provide for a lot of guidance or boards or a set resolution that other places have. Because oftentimes, we hear, well, just do this, it's very easy, look at XYZ. And that has been something I've personally struggled with a lot, because I've spoken to people in other states, and the, the main thing I get from their commentary is collective bargaining, Pennsylvania is where I know most people are related to teachers. Collective bargaining is great, but the, we always have to give up something, and most people really don't know what's going on because representatives come and speak on our behalf. And I say, oh, okay, well, that's great, you know, but, but we're learning. And I think the issue that most of us has is so much was left up to a governing body and not put in the statute, and that is what you don't see in, in states who have, other states that have collective bargaining. So I think this is a long journey, no matter which way it goes, but definitely one that we all should take the time to be much more educated and, and have many more conversations about. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Jesse?
Same question. Are you going to be training us?
Um, yes, I, I believe I'm the, the individual conducting the board training on this.
I just want to have fun with it. I'll wait until the training takes place. Thank you.
All right. Board members are able to ask questions, continue to ask questions. Are there any further final questions? We can still email them. Okay. Thank you for tonight's presentation, to help educate the board and to educate the public. For me, the purpose of this conversation tonight was to be transparent, and I was wondering if we could please put a copy of this PowerPoint on the FAQs on our website?
Yes, and it's also, it's available in Board Docs in the public section, but we can attach it, we can attach a link to the, to the FAQs.
Yeah, that makes it easier to navigate. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Sure.
So I have further questions, I'm sure, but I really appreciate the time you took tonight, and I look forward to the training that Mrs. Jesse mentioned, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is moving on to 17.02. This item is on for information. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have Al Sharoki and I believe John Wallingford will be presenting information for the board on prevailing wage.
So good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. McDade. It is Mr. Wallingford, our chief financial officer, and myself's pleasure to be able to provide you with an update on the prevailing wage rate topic. And I'd like to start off with just kind of giving you the background, that back in February of this year, you did give the superintendent and our staff and council direction to provide some information based upon a prevailing wage law and its impact on Prince William County schools, and to consider any possible resolutions based upon the update that staff is able to provide to you, specifically with construction contracts. So what I'd like to start off with, just introductory remarks and just stating, what is the prevailing wage rate? And again, this is the rate, the amount, the level of wages or salaries that are corresponding for a class of tradespeople, a class of occupation, that works on what we would call immovable properties that are considered public work. So immovable properties are basically anything in facilities management where we build things. If you take a school and you turn it upside down, everything that falls would not be under this prevailing wage rate, but everything that stays in place would be part of that. So the bricks, the mortar, the roof, the air conditioning, the plumbing, all the skills, all the occupations that are associated with public works projects, and for us, it would be basically everything within your capital improvement plan would fall under that. So for this evening, we're going to give you just an overview of the prevailing wage rate. Briefly, I'm going to talk about the recent Virginia legislation, specifically upon your direction, to talk about the Prince William School's findings as it relates to impacts to our local vendor community, look at our capital improvement projects that are currently in the 10-year approved plan, look at some project cost comparisons. We did go out and find projects that were publicly advertised where it showed prevailing and non-pervailing rates, so we're able to actually see the deltas when it comes to salary gaps that may exist. And then, talk about some action steps for adoption. There's options to accommodate if there are changes or there are fine tunings that have to occur if you were to adopt prevailing wage rate, and then ultimately, we have recommendations for your consideration. So the Virginia legislation basically gives localities the ability to approve ordinances that would allow prevailing wage rates to occur. And with this legislation, this next slide here really breaks it down to where you see that the implementation occurred, it was in the 2020 session, and it started in May 1st of 2021. There's two pieces or two words that are very specific, public works and localities. So public works is what it, where it defines the type of work, and I mentioned immovable properties, but everything that's within our capital improvement plan. The locality piece, the Code of Virginia, does include school divisions as a locality. So it's not just counties, cities, or towns, but it is, school divisions are other political subdivisions. So by, by nature of including the word localities in the Code of Virginia, it did open the door for public school divisions in Virginia to at least consider the topic of prevailing wage rates. In doing so, it, I do want to share that, you know, it is not a mandatory provision for localities. No, localities are not required to go under prevailing wage rage, wage enactments. But at the same time, they did establish some limits. The guidance is very limited that the state provided to localities, but they are very specific in stating that localities may establish contact limits that are greater than, but not less than 250,000 in project value. So again, you can go higher than 250, but you can't go below 250. And there's a piece in our findings that we will share with you when we give our recommendations about why we've chosen to set a threshold, given the fact that this was designed not to impact vendors that are below 250,000. And again, we will reiterate that further. But again, I do want to state that school boards do not have the ability to adopt an ordinance as the legislation describes, though we are considered a locality. We don't have that ability. However, you can adopt a resolution that is very similar to that effect. So in our findings, again, a very basic breakdown on the pros and the cons. We found out that, obviously, the pros are that prevailing wage rates can preclude businesses from undercutting employers that are committed to paying decent wages and bids. And that, that's just, it stands by itself. It, it does, it does force people to all have a level playing field. It does prevent what we call the race to the bottom among publicly funded contractors. So here in Prince William, we do low bid. So in order to get low bid, many times contractors, this would prevent them from just cutting the labor costs or telling a subcontractor that you're only going to be able to pay this much so that we can award this project because we have to be the lowest price. And also, the, the pro is that it does support compensation rates above the legislated minimums. But when it comes to cons, one of the items that we have found is that there are increase of cost to projects and potential decrease to the number of projects that can be completed with a CIP. And in doing so, I'm going to show you a slide where it kind of gives you that landscape of where we've seen that delta in looking at our approved CIP versus if you were to adopt a prevailing wage, that that CIP budget numbers may have to be adjusted. Cost increases may fluctuate due to supply chain issues and inflation. So there are two other variables here. Prevailing wage rages, they can increase the cost of a project bid, but we also have two other variables that are presently in play, and that is supply chain issues and inflation, which would be on top of what you're seeing in tonight's presentation. And then, implementing this could decrease competition in bidding, and that's where we're going to start talking a little bit about in future slides, about how smaller local vendors, there is tasks that are associated with any contractors that have to adopt prevailing wage, and we want to talk about what that entails and how that can be a hindrance in some cases. So with the impact with the local vendor community, you know, there is regulatory compliance, and the community, they have to, the vendors, they have to certify their compliance, meaning if we enact prevailing wage, and they go to the charts that are on the U.S. Department of Labor's website, they have to basically certify to the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry that they are paying the wage that is posted based upon the date of the award of the contract by the school board. So they have to certify that. They are also required to post the prevailing wage rates for each of their crafts, meaning the occupations, the, the skilled labor that they're hiring. They have to post them on the job site, so an electrician knows what that prevailing weight, wage rate is, as well as any other jobs that are, fall under that category. They just can't point them to a website, they got to have it on-site. There is record-keeping requirements, and obviously, you have to be able to demonstrate that you're compliant with it. There is also a legal liability for vendors if they are, if their employees are not paid at the prevailing rate wage. And in the end, there are criminal penalties for willful violations, where a contractor who agrees to a bid that is awarded by you as an elected board, and they agree to do that work, and then they choose purposely not to pay the people based upon the, the rate that they specified in their bid, there, there are criminal penalties that they are liable for. There are additional expenditures to hire consultants, to purchase software. You know, this is not something where someone just goes to a book. It's very complex, given the number of jobs. So if you're a small vendor, this could be very cumbersome for you, but if you're a large vendor that has done a lot of work here in the DC, Maryland, Virginia area, obviously to the north of Virginia, there are union trades. So many of our large contractors already engage in prevailing wage, primarily in DC and Maryland, but here in Virginia, there are fewer, just because we are still considered a right-to-work state. But in doing so, smaller vendors, which may not have the profit margin for the size of the project, or they may not have the staffs, that could become cumbersome. So that's why we put that as a con. So that's why we put that as a con for some of our smaller vendors that do work that is substantially less than what we would do for a classroom addition, or a new school construction, or renovation work. But if we're talking about replacing lighting in a school, or one or two, or a handful of HVAC units within a school, those are smaller projects, and for many of them, they may choose not to participate if you off, if you require prevailing wage, because for them, it wouldn't be worth it, because they'd have to hire people, and that would cut into the minimal profit that they're making. But for very large-scale projects where the profit margins are bigger, there, there is that ability, and the large-scale contractors are very attuned to working with prevailing wage, as they already have the staff and the software. In addition, there's training, there's education, there's administrative efforts, not only for the vendors, but for our own procurement folks here with Prince William County Schools, so that they are adept and they can answer questions, especially if there are contractors that are new to working with us, and they're not familiar, for whatever reason, with prevailing weight, wage rate, we would have to be able to provide that information to them as well. So this next slide just takes a look at our capital improvement program for the next 10 years, which you have already approved for this upcoming FY '23 year. It's just over 1.2 billion dollars in value. In this slide, there's two charts here that I just want to walk through with you just a little. The first chart that's on the top, where you see the blue bars and then the orange line, that shows the value. The blue bars are the numbers of projects that are within certain values, such as projects that are, say, less than 250,000, or projects that are greater than 250,000. The orange line shows the value of the project. So when you look at these two together, you see that basically, it looks like 50% of our projects are below 2.5 million dollars in value, and just over 50% are greater than 2.5 million dollars. At the same time, you see that value where really, the price of our project really goes up at about 2.5 to 5 million dollars, and you see that orange line on the right side just kind of move in an upward direction. So, so in looking at that, you know, what we see is projects that are below, say, 2.5 million, those are projects that are generally very small in nature. And you say 2.5 million, that's not a small project. But when you're replacing HVAC equipment, that is a small project, because the equipment is very expensive. So you could have a 2.5 million dollar roof replacement, or 2.5 million dollar HVAC replacement, and close to 75% of the cost of that project is for the equipment itself. It's not just labor, it's the equipment, when you get into mechanical-type systems. So for us, we see that there are a good percentage of our projects, which, you know, if you had to break it down, roughly 96% of our project value is greater than 2.5 million, and then close to 4% is below 2.5 million. So again, numbers of projects in value. The intent of prevailing wage is obviously to impact as many tradespeople as possible that work on our construction projects. So the larger the projects, the greater numbers of contractors and subcontractors and employees that you're, that you would be impacting in doing so. So when we look at the local landscape for our projects, we looked for projects that had been publicly awarded. The projects that you see here are all, it's all public information. We, we scoured, working with some of our contractors, projects where localities purposely advertise their construction projects, where they ask the contractors to show what would be the cost to the locality if you provided prevailing wage rates, or you did not. And what you see here, as I'm showing you this chart, if you look at the column on the far left, you will see that all but two are general contractors, and the bottom two are subcontractors. And when you look, as you move to the right for the types of projects where we see security vestibules, renovations, electrical plumbing work, energy contracts, school construction, there's an elementary school construction, the projects range from Howard County, Maryland, to Montgomery County, Maryland, and then we found a few that were in Culpeper City Schools, as well as Loudoun County Public Schools. And what you see here, if you look at the percentage between prevailing and non-pervailing, you see a very big differential from, you know, from about 8% up to, close to 33% for large-scale projects. And what you'll notice is, if you, if you see the, the states that we have here, such as Maryland, the delta is very smaller compared to the delta for the Virginia projects. Part of that reason, we would speculate, is because the, Maryland is already unionized, so they're already paying those rates for the majority of their projects, whereas in Culpeper and Loudoun, there are still contractors that are not paying the, the prevailing wage rate. So you see a greater delta in Virginia, because Virginia has not adopted prevailing wage, more than likely at the level that you see here for the Maryland projects. But when you get down to the bottom two, this is where you see a big delta between what is the prevailing wage minimum and what the subcontractors are actually paying. When you see price differences between 61 and close to 98%, that's a huge delta for mechanical parts or components. So when you look at small projects, we see that prevailing wage can be very costly for smaller contractors that are doing work that's below 2.5 million. But there is a lot of sway here. So for us, looking at this information, what we would tell you is, we don't know what it would actually cost additionally to do prevailing wage, but if you just look at the facts here, we know that the cost will more than likely go up for our school division. But to say how much it's going to go up, only time will tell, because we have not advertised projects where we have said to show us prevailing and non-pervailing. But you kind of get an idea here that there is some cost that will be associated if you were to adopt it. So the action steps. If we were to adopt this, I just want to walk through the process, because it's, it's very intensive. The responsibility of prevailing wage, we put that on the general contractors and their subs. Prince William would not play an active part in monitoring this, other than receiving the certification from the contractors and subcontractors. So how this would work is if we were to adopt this, we would advertise our projects, just like we do public bids, and we would include prevailing wage requirements, so all the contractors and subs would know, to submit based upon the prevailing wage rate for that geographic area that the schoolwork is being done, and that, again, that information's on the U.S. Department of Labor's website. The contractors will prepare and submit the project bids based upon those prevailing weight, wage rates, that's a tongue twister for me. We will award the contract, bring it to you to award publicly. The work begins, the contractor posts the information on the sites, and monthly, the subcontractors and the contractors, as they submit their payment applications, as they do already today, they're going to have to certify that their payroll and payment is respective of the prevailing wage rate requirements, and they'll have to certify that. And obviously, if the U.S. Department of Labor, the Virginia Department of Labor was to audit or to look, or if there was a complaint that was arisen, they would be responsible in having to correct that and ensure that it is accurate, or face fines, or even criminal, criminal liability. So in doing so, you know, we've talked about how there could be an impact financially if we were to adopt prevailing wage rates. And this is true for anything when you have projects that are in your CIP budget, and let's say the projects come in over budget, a project comes in over bid. You know, what are the things that we would do in order to be able to continue to move our projects forward? Well, the first one is, the one that you see here, is just to sell more debt. Now, that's easier said than done. Selling debt is not, you know, when you sell debt, you're just increasing your mortgage, your mortgage payment, and we kind of put that here on the slide. You just can't sell debt to sell debt. You have a debt limit, and Mr. Wallingford could talk in further detail about that, but you, you have certain ranges that you can only sell debt to because of the financial requirements. You have to continue to maintain your triple-triple-A bond rating, so we would have to stay in good standing. So just selling bond is not the only way that you might overcome projects that come in over budget. You might have to delay projects. You may have five projects in a year, you find that you can only afford four, and you just have to defer one to the following year. You delay it. You ultimately are going to still do it, you just have to wait a year. And we kind of did this when we entered into the pandemic, and we held off on a lot of those cash-based projects, because we wanted to hold that money. But then you made that commitment, once that money was solvent, to enact that. So those projects were still achieved, it just took a year later for those to be able to be accomplished. You might reduce the number of projects that are in your 10-year CIP. And again, when I say reduce, I'm not saying eliminate. I'm saying you just have to reduce it, because you have to do, pay it over a greater period of time, because your cost has gone up. And we know that with inflation, you know, Mr. Wallingford and I and the CIP, we've spoken to you. When we present the CIP in January, I can imagine that we will be coming back to you later this fall to talk about what the current inflationary costs are based upon the construction market, because we will have to make adjustments to our CIP. Take prevailing wage aside, inflation is going to cause us to have to adjust our CIP. But we don't want to make any decisions today, because we're in the midst of the inflation, and we don't have any projects that are going out immediately. We have time so that we can use the most current, best information possible before we make adjustments to the CIP. You can reduce scope, you can right-size projects. These are areas that I, I generally do not recommend. I think as a practice, it's better to go in, to do a project as it was originally designed and committed to our schools, and to hold off on projects rather than going in and only doing 50% of a project, and then being required or obligated to have to go back and do something that you couldn't do because you had financial constraints. It's a tool in the toolbox, but it's one of the last ones that I, I would recommend even considering. So when we look at our, the recommendations that we have, you know, we gave you pretty much three options that we considered. And, you know, again, we, we believe that we want to find a balance between providing opportunities to provide a very competitive prevailing wage rage, wage to our community and to our, our contractors, our subcontractors. But at the same time, we don't want to hinder some of our contractors that may be smaller or may not be familiar with prevailing wage. So though the law says that you cannot go below 250, we show 250,000 as one of the options, we also show 2.5 million as being the threshold and 5 million. And our recommendation would to be, if you were to adopt this, to not establish a threshold that's any less than 2.5 million. You could always go up, but we would not recommend going below 2.5 million, because we do believe that that will encompass a lot of the smaller projects that are completed by a lot of local contractors that are within the greater Prince William County community. And we would want, and obviously, we can reassess over time, looking at the data, but that would be our recommendation at this point. And by doing projects that are a minimum of 200, 2.5 million or greater, I do want to remind you that you are accomplishing 96% of the value of our projects. So it's still a very large portion of the total value that you approve as a board. So with that being said, Mr. Wallingford and I, we're happy to provide any specific questions that you may have. We, I understand I provided you something that's very, 10,000-foot level, it could be very complicated, but we could definitely answer any questions that you might have specifically in helping you make the best decision.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I just have one question. It sounds like the recommendation, it basically helps to level the playing field for the smaller contractor, or smaller companies who may not be able to participate if prevailing wage is passed across the board. So we're still trying to be equitable in providing workers, for lack of a better term, excuse me if that's not correct, the, and companies the ability to pay their workers a fair wage, but also striking that balance and allowing smaller companies to still be able to bid on projects and participate on projects, and not exclude them, because they also have to earn a living as well. And if we weren't to do that, then a larger company basically could just come in and be able to bid on anything, and they would be excluded, if, if I'm understanding.
Yes, that's a very fair statement.
Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Waugh?
Can, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I appreciate it. Can you tell me roughly, or very broadly, high-level-ish, how close we are to the prevailing wage in our contracts currently?
Yeah, so I'm not able to give you an approximation, but what I would tell you is, I would think that, because we have not advertised projects where we ask contractors to show us both. But I think that if you were to look at Loudoun and Culpeper, because many of the contractors and subcontractors that bid on their work, bid on our projects. There are, we do have some Maryland contractors here that have bid on Prince William projects, but they're very large contractors. They work Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia. So I would say, you know, could it range between 5 and 15, 20%? Absolutely, based upon the data that we show here. So we, we just, the best that we could do is provide you with what we can see publicly to give you the most information to make a decision on.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like in this, if this were to some, be something that we would do, we would actually possibly end up disadvantaging our local Virginia small business kinds of vendors in the competition, in the market, you know, in the vendor market, because the big, you know, multi-regional, the regional, multi-state businesses would have the advantage, whereas the small, like, local businesses, startups, you know, based in Warrenton or something like that, would have a tougher time competing.
So, so that's part of the reason why, in providing you with a recommendation, we felt it was a good balance to go with not 250,000, which was the minimum that the state enacted, but to go with 2.5, because we feel as if those, those vendors that you're describing, those are the ones that will fall into the project categories that are below a minimum of 2.5 million.
Okay, and, and then to, and to kind of clarify, and from my understanding, the 200, the 2.5 million, that's kind of a floor. You're saying like, that's not the recommendation necessarily, that's like, at least that, right?
The floor is 250,000, but we would recommend to start, to have that floor at 2.5.
2.5 million, okay. And can I ask you a question on the sell, the, sell more debt issue, going to the slide 11? My understanding is that generally, selling more debt is, is risky from a financial standpoint, but it's also reputationally risky as well, right? Could you elaborate just a little bit more, but on what that impact, the impact of that would be on our, on our triple-A rating? And, and to our reputational risk, I suppose?
So thank you for the question, Mrs. Wallace. It's a, it's a very good question. Prince William County and Prince William County Schools adhere to some rules with regard to debt that have been set up by the county and the Board of County Supervisors. On the sale of debt, we maintain a 10% cap. As long as we stay under of total revenue, and as long as we stay underneath that 10% cap of total revenue, the rating agencies who currently rate us triple-triple-A, the highest you can get, are satisfied. There, there are a lot of other things that go into our financial reputation, things like the, the length of financial management, you know, the, the longevity of the people in place, like Mr. Martino, Ms. Cassiato, myself, and our team here, we've all been around for a long time, and, and they see that as, as a very strong thing. So the only thing that we really need to, to pay attention to with regard to your question about debt, is that we don't get ourselves up to the 10% cap.
Okay, thank you. And I can't remember where we are right now, eight something?
We're running around 8.5%. That number's probably going to go down a little bit for two reasons. The first is, as you're all aware, our revenue increased by about 181 million dollars this year. So when you do the math problem, your, your, your debt to revenue ratio has actually decreased. The other thing that this Board did this year is allow the school division to provide more cash to capital, because our balance sheet was so strong. So we provided an additional 30 million dollars, which actually reduced the amount of debt that we sold in our most recent sale. So we went the right way on each of those numbers. So we may be down around 8% now. We haven't done that calculation yet.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one more question? So going back to the pro and con page, I think that's seven, maybe? Slide seven? Six, slide six? What is the advantage? I see that, that there is an advantage for the laborers, the trades, and advantage to larger businesses. What does the advantage to us for adopting this? Or generally, is there an advantage, or?
I think the general rule would be, if you as a board were adopted, you would be taking the premise that you believe that employees who work for Prince William County who fall under the criteria of prevailing wage would be paid what the U.S. Department of Labor deems as the prevailing wage rate for our geographic location. About fair assessments of what I could share with you.
Okay, okay, right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you so much for the, um, information tonight. I appreciate it. It was very fast and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board matters? No, no, I don't have any questions.
Moving on to board matters, um, you have three minutes per board member. Um, Ms. Jesse, would you like to start this evening? Thank you.
I just want to say that, uh, there have been so many phenomenal programs done in this county. Uh, the educators' awards program was just, uh, you guys knocked it out of the park. It was just beautiful, the talent that was displayed, the young speakers and the young emcees, and the play, there was a play at Woodbridge that was all over the top. And also, they had a, uh, choral production that was just phenomenal. The talent in this county is overwhelming. I want to just, uh, one item. You know, when we talk about collective bargaining and all these things, about 30 or 40 years ago, this lady named Jackie Wurdenberg came to do a workshop for me, and I was Title I supervisor, and she says that, she said to me, everybody has to have a tada. You know, you can talk about collective bargaining and all these things, at the end of the day, teachers need to have a tada. And, uh, I, so I was trying to think how I could do this, and so Kenny Bodie and I set up what we call a gratitude tour, and you can see this. We, we delivered doughnuts, well, actually Kenny Bodie did not, because Kenny has had a major situation with his knees, and so my husband, of course, had to help me. But we have delivered, uh, we had, we delivered 10 dozen doughnuts to high schools, eight to middle, and we're doing five to elementary schools. And you can see the, it says nothing but gratitude. I think at the end of the day, we have to realize that when people say they're not happy, they're not happy. And it's, it's interesting because you don't really need to do very much. And I, I want to make this short because I have to get up tomorrow morning to deliver some more doughnuts. So, and I, I think there's one other slide that we have, and these are the people at Woodbridge High School, and you can see the doughnuts. And I thought we'd given too many doughnuts. I said to Jesse, I said, I think we gave them 10 dozen, I don't think they need it. But then somebody called me today and said, what happened to the doughnuts? Uh, it's a small gesture, and I want to thank Woodbridge High School and all the schools that participated with me, having the doors open in the morning. And by the way, these funds came from my funds and from Kenny's fund, they were not from school board funds. So thank you, teachers, for all that you do. I realize that you're tired and you're ready to go, so I thought maybe a doughnut would wake you up or fatten you up, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jesse. Ms. Williams?
Thank you very much, um, Madam Vice Chair. I want to start by, um, doing a congratulations to our Governor's School students. Um, they did graduate on May 20th. They graduated a little early, um, because one of our school divisions that participates graduates early, as well as they're under Mason's schedule. Um, speaking of George Mason, as a EIP alumni myself, it was, again, a tremendous honor to be able to participate, well, to attend the EIP graduate and new initiates for students. Um, Prince William County Schools had several graduates, um, that, uh, for this year through the program. Um, I can very much attest to how life-changing the Early Identification Program is. I know, um, it was instrumental in my success in life and definitely one of the primary reasons that I was able to attend college. It is a, um, nationally recognized program, and I am forever grateful for Prince William County Schools for their continued participation with the Early Identification Program. Special thanks to Ms. Kadeen, Mr. Kehin, Kasim Davis, excuse me, and also to Rena Asenko, who is, um, a Prince William County Schools graduate herself, who just ended a 14-year run with EIP. She is essentially walking EIP and one of our very own. Um, I was also able to attend on 5/29, um, the play Matilda at the Horton-Fulton Performing Arts Center. I was pleased to see Prince William County students, as well as students from the surrounding area, put on an adult award-winning show. I took my son, who was captivated the entire time, um, which was wonderful to see because that's usually only the case when there's Legos or Pokemon involved. Um, I was able to attend the Title I night at Marumsco Hills Elementary, um, and it was wonderfully attended, full cafeteria, staff did a great job. Also, another joy of my heart was the CTE signing night. Um, I was informed, first off, I'm so very proud for Doug Wright and the CTE team for the program that they put on, and, um, so very proud to see our students, even one of our student in the audience who had to bring his little brother because he was babysitting. But the comment that I heard was, this was from some, for some parents and some students, the only time in their academic career where they were recognized. And it shouldn't be the only time, but I am so thankful that we, as a division, honor our CTE students and what they decide to do when they leave Prince William County Schools. I was able to sell, sub in for Justin Wilk at Potomac Senior High School's Freedom of Decades presentation. Always lovely to see students engaged in research projects. And with my last 18 seconds, I had other things to say, but what I will say is, I've been hearing a lot from my elementary schools, um, teachers and principals and administrators about how stressed teachers have been with the SOL score results. And I just want you to know, as an elementary school parent, how proud I am for all of the work that you put in to make these students ready for their SOLs. No matter the test scores, your effort is greatly appreciated, and I personally acknowledge it, and I'm so thankful that you continue to show up every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. So, um, I have been to a lot of places and a lot of activities recently, um, and it's been a real pleasure, and there are a couple of reasons why I go to these activities. One is to support the students in their, um, efforts to be excellent. And two is to increase my exposure in the community so that people, one, can talk to me and bring issues up directly to me, and two, so that they know, um, how to, how to find me. Um, and so I've been able to go to some really great things, awards night at Battlefield High School where students were awarded scholarships, um, a CASIT, that's the, that's the specialty program at Battlefield. There, they held a graduation within their program, which was amazing. Um, Governor's School Innovation Park graduation. Um, I helped man the candy station at a bull run eighth grade dance, which was crazy and super fun. Um, and, um, high school career day, outstanding educator ceremony, band concerts, middle school concerts, um, a wellness night and blood drive, um, and all kind, and some other good things, and I'm looking forward to all of the graduations. I'm really proud of the graduates. I know it is a huge accomplishment for the class of 2022, they've been through a lot. Um, their high school especially has been affected by COVID. And so I encourage them to stay strong and to push forward, um, and I'm really proud of them, and I just want to say, um, I look forward to celebrating with them at as many graduations as I can attend. Um, I wanted to share just a couple of thoughts, um, about my thoughts on prevailing wage. I know it's not up for vote, just wanted to share things that I'm concerned about. Um, I'm concerned about the uncertainty in the labor market, uncertainty in inflation, the highly fluctuating costs in the construction materials, industries. Um, and I'm also concerned because we have overcrowding in our eastern end, especially in the elementary schools, and I'm worried that this will impact our ability to provide those schools and those classrooms to relieve that overcrowding. So, you know, we have the 14th high school also in the eastern end. Um, I know it's a tight market for obtaining, obtaining contractors, and I'm very, I'm very concerned about all of that, so I would ultimately just advise caution, especially in this volatile financial, um, time. Um, my concerns about collective bargaining in 30 seconds. Um, I know this is a really important decision, and the impact will be felt for years to come, and we should not make this decision lightly, and it should not be something that we just do under pressure. Um, it will fundamentally change the structure of the relationship between management and workforce here in Prince William County. My fear is that the impact on kids, it has been missing from the conversation almost entirely. Um, it, I also fear that we will have an increase in politics and political influence over education and make it harder for us to protect our workforce from political pressure and political tactics such as retaliation for people who do not join the union. Um, costs will be hard to determine, could be very, very easily escalate, the law is vague and poorly written. Um, these are all of my concerns. I remain open to listening to people's opinions on this matter, and, um, I wish to say good night to everybody and happy graduation to our graduates of 2022.
Ms. Agapoor?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we've all had, um, it sounds like we've all been very, pretty busy. This is a very busy time of year with all of the ceremonies and, and recognitions and things like that. Um, I too went to see Matilda, it was fantastic, and I saw a former student of mine, a Fairfax student. So, um, I think it's, um, it, it's really important to realize that our arts programs here in Prince William County draw people from outside, so that was pretty significant. Um, went to the educator, uh, Outstanding Educator Award Ceremony, it was great to hear about, uh, our fantastic educators. I am curious if we ever do, um, and, um, any kind of awards for, uh, other educational professionals, like our drivers and things like that. So, um, the ESPs, as we call it. Um, so that would be something that I'd like to be interested in. Um, went to Yorkshire Elementary, where they were doing a summer, uh, reading program. They were getting kids set up with book bags and library cards and reading materials so that they can continue through the summer. Went to visit Lock Loman for their science night, they had, um, activities for all the parents and the kids to do, but they also showed all these really great displays of science projects that the kids worked on. The one I would love to be invited in on was the ice cream, which milk makes the best ice cream. I could be your taste tester, I'm just putting that out there. Um, also got to, uh, go to the, um, automotive programs banquet at, uh, Hilton High School, and, uh, we had, I didn't realize this was going to happen. We, um, honored Ed Stevens, who's the instructor there. One of the things he did, uh, during this banquet was he lined up all of his students from, I believe it was 1999 to the present time, so they were kids, kids, they're adults now, who came back. Um, these are wildly successful adults, um, is a, sounds like an amazing educator, but one of the, the most, I don't know, I thought it was really interesting that he asked his current students to stand up who had their resumes, ready to pass out to people who could possibly offer them, you know, jobs. So I thought that was a really, uh, great thing for our students. Speaking of our students, we have, um, I went to Colgan's award ceremony last night, and there's over $16 million in scholarships being offered to our Colgan students. Hilton High School is $4 million, um, plus at this point, they don't have a final number for me. Osborne Park is on $16,685,295. So I think that's amazing that our kids are, are out there doing great things. Um, Colgan Baseball has a quarterfinal game tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. Go Sharks! And, uh, everybody enjoy the rest of your week. Um, you're, you're, I know you're all busy, so, um, enjoy your, your ceremonies, your promotion programs and all of that.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. Um, real quick, in the past two weeks, I've had the pleasure of doing day trips to Triangle, Grand Park, Ashland, Dumfries, Henderson, Squonks Creek, Montclair, Mary Williams, Patty, Potomac Middle, and Potomac High School. Uh, made sure I made my presence and visited a lot of classrooms, uh, and stuff like that, good stuff happening. Uh, I also attended the V-Case Conference, that's for special educators, down in Portsmouth. Um, I also attended the Forest Park Spring Choral Concert, uh, Potomac Shores Middle School Orchestra Concert, Ashland Heritage Night, and with Ms. Agapoor, watched the Forest Park Colgan Regional, uh, baseball game. Um, wanted to add, you know, a couple of things that came up tonight, um, and mentioned that, you know, I have long advocated for SROs because I know the importance our SROs play within our school communities. Not only do our SROs provide an increased level of security for our schools, but they become a part of our respective school communities. Now to the reality of the situation. Speaking for myself only, I would love to have an SRO in every building. Unfortunately, there are not enough officers on our current force or even nationally right now. Similar to the decline of teacher applicants, there is a decline in the number of applicants pursuing law enforcement. Those new classes of hires you see, they're filling gaps as a result of attrition taking place across the country. Due to the national climate and often the demonization of law enforcement, I'm not surprised. We need more qualified individuals applying to our police department. I encourage any of those interested to go online to join pwc pd.org and consider a career in law enforcement. Now, until then, we have the fortunate opportunity of being in an area with an immense number of retired military and those who have served in law enforcement. Many of these individuals have already reached out and expressed a desire to volunteer in our schools. We should use these resources and provide opportunities to these individuals at the beginning of next school year. Before not being reappointed to the Safe Schools Advisory Council in January, the committee was finalizing opportunities for not only a county-wide expansion of the watchdog program, but to create programs to address the increased behavioral issues confronting students in our middle and high schools. There needs to be more programs in place to address school security concerns as opposed to not having enough SROs to staff every school. Thank you for your time.
Hey, um, thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank Haymarket for inviting me to see Matilda. It was spectacular, and thank you to Marcelo Middle School for the invitation to listen to their choir, it was a beautiful concert. Thank you to the Brentsville District High School for inviting me to the award ceremony, I loved cheering on the graduating Tigers. I was also honored to attend the CTE signing day, and I brought my own kids to watch and celebrate with the students and their families on this day, so they could see these motivated role models. Congratulated, congratulations to all those who were nominated to the Outstanding Educators' Award, including Brentsville Secondary New Teacher of the Year, Natalie Hackman of Gainesville High School. Some of the criteria selection of the Principal of the Year included the ability to demonstrate and encourage creativity and innovation, foster cooperation between school and community, maintain a continuing dialogue with students and parents, and so on. Congratulations to Bristol Run Elementary School's Principal, Rondo Jack. Also, congratulations to those who own the National Board Certification, Teacher Certification. That is an extensive, rigorous process, just wow and great job. As an educator, I know firsthand the importance of inclusion and acceptance, valuing all students. Prince William County Schools offers several programs in addition to Unified Sports, which serve our students with special needs, including Fun Friends at Colgan and Freedom High School Bistro's. One of these programs is also at Patriot High School. Employ. Employ started in 2011 with a class of one and now has six blocks and 11 business partners. Employ is a high school CTE program that includes both class and community-based learning. Employ is a high school, um, CTE program that also facilitates their entry into suitable occupations in accordance with their individualized educational needs and aptitudes and interests. Through community-based instruction, students develop job skills through the completion of internships and paid employment. The strategic plan has a goal to improve this program. Employ provides students with the skills that facilitate their entry into occupations in accordance with their individualized educational needs. I support initiatives that promote individualized high expectations. Last week was heartbreaking. Thank you to Dr. McDade for your words tonight regarding insecurity. As a parent, last week was hard. As an educator, last week was hard. I appreciate the audit, as it is an example of the growth mindset needed during these ever-changing times. I hope everyone has a good night and stay safe. There being nothing further to come before this board, and now to declare this meeting adjourned.